That is you.
I was looking for the mic. Councilmember Wayman Furman.
Present.
Councilmember Elaine Holmes.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Miller.
Present.
Mayor Protem Lupe Ramos Amit.
Present.
And Mayor Oscar Ortiz.
Present.
And now for the planning commi-- uh, I'm sorry, the Public Arts Commission, Commissioner Gabriela Armenta.
Here.
Commissioner Alexandria Sanchez.
Present.
Commissioner Bill Shinsky.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Cecilia Cruz Zandehas is absent. And Chairperson A.J. Neumeyer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Leila, would you like to lead us?
Please put your hand on your heart and repeat after me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual will ever be in justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments up here?
None, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Nambar, we'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council and Public Arts Commission. I'm Leila Nambar, Public Arts Analyst for the City of India. So why we are here today is because the previous staff has drafted a strategic plan that was supposed to be adopted by the council. However, after the new staff reviewed it, we found out that there are many areas on that strategic plan that if we, if the council would like to adopt, requires code amendment to the current Public Arts Code, or as it's written in our code, Arts in Public Places. So that's why we are here today, and we will discuss all those in addition to the Arts and Culture Master Plan that it was a wish from the council. So staff would like to know where we can go. So today's agenda will include, we're gonna talk about the current Arts in Public Places program, code modification, if everybody would like to do that, fee increase, type of public arts, does the city would like to be going more toward contemporary art or literary arts, where the city would like to be, priorities, and again, type of arts. Arts and Culture Master Plan, which we will talk about the process budget, and we think it will take between six to mon-- nine months if we want to do it. So what we would like to accomplish at the end of this workshop, it is to find out from the council and the commission if the direction to staff is just keep the status quo, code modification, Arts and Culture Master Plan, or code modification followed by a master plan. So the current program that we have basically allows the city to develop art pieces, pay for the cost of it. The cost comes from the percentage of building permits. And with that, we can purchase the art piece and install it within the city. The fund can pay for the design, purchase, commission, installation, maintenance, and insurance of the artwork, and also the administration cost. All of these easy way is translates to put sculptures, murals, and also traffic signal box wraps. And then currently how that works is we have a yearly plan. The yearly plan outlines the carryover ongoing and new projects. It, um, the new projects are for the new fiscal year. The plan also shows how much is for each project, the anticipated cost, where it's gonna go, what the theme will be, how we're gonna select artists. The plan is also based on the availability of the fund. Of course, we can commission a million dollar, you know, project, but we don't have that much money, so it goes based on the priority. We try to stretch our money to more projects. Then that plan gets reviewed by staff for the safety and being able to make it. Also, it goes to this city departments, it goes to the Community Services Commission, it goes to the Public Arts Commission, we collect all the feedbacks, and the final work plan comes to the council for the council review and approval, which you've seen it last year. This year, we haven't proposed a work plan because we thought best to go through this process and then introduce you the work plan. So things that we could do is what you see on this page, which we have done. Beautiful sculptures, beautiful murals, some art pieces on traffic signal boxes. What we cannot do is temporary art, is visual arts, is special events like chalk festival, film festival, fashion shows, urban art festival, mural festivals, light festivals, because those are very temporary, they are not permanent, and they can't be accessible year-round or all the time. We can't collaborate with museums. By collaboration, I mean we can't dedicate part of the art money to the museums for, for projects. For example, for art exhibits for the local artists or classes. Community performing arts like drama, music, and dance, we cannot do that. Literary art, book reading, poetry night, comedy shows, even culinary art, creative place making been paired with artists. So we're building a lot of places, the cities make building it, and also the developers, but we can't really pair them with the artists from the beginning. So the creativity is there from the beginning, not we go at the end and we place something there. We can't create a city art hub, which to have a centralized space for artists to come together, community to come together, learn about art and things like that. But cannot means we can't dedicate the art fund toward it. Which if we be able to dedicate the art fund toward it, then your general fund budget is free from that portion, so you can do other things with it. But this way, we can utilize that art money. So subjects to, to, subjects to discussion. Would you like to modify the code to Allah temporary art and also cultural events like the chalk festival that, that we had? Would you like to do a fee increase? Our fee is 25% of a dollar. It's 25, no, it is point 25% for the residential and point 5% for, point, point 5% for commercial. So it is very low, we can increase it to 1% or even 2%, if that's the direction that the city would like to go. Do we wanna focus and invest more in art, culture, history, and also creative community? Do we have any desire to have more art and cultural activity in the neighborhoods where the people live? So take that to the neighborhoods. Do we wanna think or see more contemporary art versus literary art? Do we wanna enhance the city's character through design by art, which could also create recreation and leisure? So these are the questions that staff would like to know from the council and also the commission. And I can't stop here, we can have a discussion, or I can go through the entire presentation, whichever you would like. Okay, my boss said, let's go through it.
I just have a quick question.
Let's go through.
Just a quick question, put that back up.
It is up.
No, someone took it away from us. You said creative community, but it says creative economy. Which one did you mean?
I'm sorry, creative community.
So this is supposed to say community?
Correct.
Oh, okay, thank you, that's all.
Which could lead to creative economy too. So, okay, I'll go through then. Where the city would like to be, so I just wanna touch base a little bit on the public arts. It's an evolving area. So basically, it is the artist's response to our time, combined with our own sense of who we are as a city, and also reflects how we see the world. It makes a community stand apart. So it is also a way to, to improve the quality of life. It evokes emotions, supposed to evoke emotions, abuse. I mean, the people who see that, they're supposed to think what the artist was thinking, what is he or she is creating, and then go back again and again. There is a statue by the Rancho Mirage Library. It's a great bronze metal piece of a cowboy. It's beautiful, but you see it once, and that's it. You don't wanna go back and see, okay, from the other angle, or what is this? So it is obvious. It is not also just permanent sculpture. It could be temporary, interactive, functional, and even maybe performance oriented. Say have some examples. So connecting the community, you, you see it on the left slide. It's leisure on the top right. It triggers conversation, the smiley face in the alley. Again, it, it, it's, you wanna go back and in different, you know, times, look at the shade. You wanna go inside, experiment it. This is just special, just lighting, but it's just brings people to the area just to look at the art, and it may be a restaurant there, so after you eat, you go there, walk with your kid and enjoy, creates atmosphere. This is again, an old alley, they put this sculpture then, and people are sitting there and enjoying. Also, somebody thought their wedding could be a park. That's only the exteriors cool for the kids, but also the interiors are very, a movie festival. There's no movie festival in the East Valley. And I'm a filmmaker, so that's, that's my dream to have it's well in India. We have a great stage building in downtown, and then this is a, this is a fashion show. So it brings people, it connects people, it is fun. We can do it with other money, but if we wanna do it in arts and culture, again, your general fund will be not used. Again, subject for discussion, build innovatively. Do you wanna build innovatively, create a stronger and vibrant community to socialize, learn, play, live, workshop, study? Create a healthy community therefore, connect the community, create community dialogue, solve problems via public art, and enhance the infrastructure, infrastructure and environment, create and celebrate a place. So now, after we answer all those, which will be later on, our, um, staff would like to touch base on the project master plan. We added the, to create an art, culture, and creative community master plan. We can again, stay in the status quo, we can remove the creative community, but this is just, be more one-stop shop. So to do that, we need to, to assess the current state of art and culture in India, create a comprehensive data list of art and cultural assets that could include art venues, art organizations, art education centers in true, including K-12 to higher education, art programs, art businesses, and any other opportunities. Then we gather widespread community input about the role of art and culture and creative community making in India. We interview all the stakeholders to measure the economic impact of such plan. We define the role of city departments in the advancement of the arts in the city. By arts, I mean public arts. Prepare and present a report with actionable recommendations to the city council, and this will could, could take at least six to nine months. Again, I would like to recap what we talked about it. Do you wanna be status quo? Would you like to go with a code, code modification? Would you like to be art and culture master plan plus creative community? Or would you like to do both? And I'm here to hear from the council and the commission. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have questions yet, but I do wanna give more background information. So when we pass the arts fee, there was a lot of opposition by the Building Industry Association because this is ultimately something that they pay as part of development. So we worked collaboratively with them, and if we were to make any changes, they would want to be involved in the process as well. As far as the, the percentage, I'm not sure what other cities are doing now. I'm not really, I don't have an opinion, I guess is what I'm saying. But I just wanted to let you know that. The only time that we as a council have ever changed the, or it's an ordinance, was when we added the word "culture", because we did want to include more cultural type art into our program. So I guess I just wanted to give that background information, that this isn't just, we just decide what we're gonna do and move forward. This involves the people that are gonna be paying the fee before we can even go down a path of, of community input or anything like that. So that's all I wanted to say at this point. I will have questions later when we discuss the individual topics.
How does the council or commissioners feel about opening up to temporary art installations or art shows and movies, those kind of events, for this funding specifically?
Well, again, I just have to interject that the building industry was strongly opposed, that's--
No, no, for the funding we already have.
We can't change it.
Can't once you--
You can't change it.
Oh.
That's what I'm telling you.
Gotcha.
The building industry was adamant about physical art only. So if we're going to in any way deviate, we have to go back to them. And that's why I'm giving you the background.
Okay.
We can't just decide what we want.
But how do we feel before we decided we want to go to them to change that?
Well, I'm just gonna tell you they're gonna be adamantly against it. So I'm not sure how we feel is important.
How long ago did we do this?
Ten years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while. But I, I'm not against doing cultural art. I don't know if I want to get out of this fund. It just depends on how much funding we have in here, what our ultimate goals are in larger projects. I've always said that we should do something with Golden Voice. You know, we have a lot of their art pieces here now that are throughout the city because of that, and partner with them on a piece that we're gonna keep every year, and then find a place, location based on it, and put it out here. So to take it away from cultural stuff, I'd rather take it from other funding than I would to take away from the art, unless we're gonna try and come up with a way to, to raise the fee somehow. And do we do it on businesses? Do we do it on housing? Housing's already, you know, expensive, and will this kill it off? No. But every time you add fees to housing, you, you limit the cost of what people can get into. So there's a lot more to it than just raising the fees and, you know, the 218 and all the other stuff that go with raising fees on, on certain arts and that. And do, does everybody get the, the product out of it? Is, you know, for somebody coming in now, they have the opportunity to either give us the money or put an art piece in. Will they start doing the art pieces that they choose to do or do start doing things that are gonna go through? So there's a lot to consider.
If it helps, there are some communities that will have a percentage, much like our ordinance dictates a percentage for administrative costs. No more than 5% can be used for these other temporary arts. Another community I'm aware of just says no more than $10,000 a year may be used. So there's a way to cap that that would probably be more accepted by the, the building industry if, if it were limited. But still would give some flexibility for what are art, art projects.
But what are we, what we're thinking is, what, what are you thinking about if you're gonna do cultural arts or different kinds of temporary arts or, you know, that? Are we talking 50,000, we talking 100,000?
Well, I guess the question is, is this coming from the commission? Is this what you're thinking, or we wanna hear from you?
Right.
The, the document the previous staff was working on was pretty aspirational. It was all the things that, you know, would be nice to have in addition to physical pieces. We know that that's how the ordinance has been. When past staff and commissioners, they wanted to expand on that. We did have direction from council one time to try to explore, you know, getting some money towards the IPAC and performing arts or towards concert. And because the ordinance is written as the way it is, it was no, it can only be for physical and permanent, or, you know, as permanent as you can get. You know, we talked 10, 15-year type lifespans on minimum projects. It's not necessarily been something that's been driven by the commission. We would like to see more art events that we can support local community, but we understand if the, if the fee, as the way the ordinance is written, can only be for permanent structure, for murals or anything like that. We get that. As a commission, we were supporting language for the city to help with that, not necessarily financially, but more, you know. We'd like to see this as a goal, even if the commission couldn't spend money on this kind of thing. As far as fees go, there are lots of cities that have a goal of 1%. And you can actually look up percent for art online to see all the different cities, like here in California, San Jose, San Francisco, Santa Diego, Manhattan Beach, I think Los Angeles. City of Oakland is 1.5% for public art. It's just where you wanna see, you know, and how much. And I understand BIA is gonna kick back with whatever. So I don't know, as part of your discussion with them, maybe to, to, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, is to, is to be supportive and to say, you know, you know, we talk about the art economy, the art tourism, you know, it's gonna draw people, it's gonna bring people to the area. We, we have had those discussions as far as with Carl Morgan's office and dealing with, you know, placing sculptures in the city. Those are things to discuss as part of your negotiations with BIA or whoever. I don't know who's in charge right now.
Um, what's his name?
Gutierrez.
No, not her. Legislative guy that they--
Oh, James Brown.
James Brown.
He used to be Bruce Maisie, who's, you know, I dealt with before.
I think it's James right now.
Okay, it is James. Okay. That's some of your questions?
Yeah, I mean, one of the bottom lines is the quality of life that is being offered. And that, that's why people live in places, because of the quality of life. And if you have good programs, good cultural programs, good educational programs, good business programs, it is that, it is the quality of life. And, and if, I'm assuming that developers understand that, that if they're gonna sell their homes, that's, that's what they tell potential buyers, is that you're not only buying a great house, but it's the quality of life in the town where you're living. Our program, the Arts Commission, tries to do projects that enhance the quality of life of the City of India. That's just the bottom line.
Any comments on this side?
Yeah, I wanna just, to add to that, if there's any way-- okay, so if we cannot tap into the public arts funds, is there any way that the city itself, while they're reaching out to the building industry, maybe start off by making sure that we do have those cultural programs, and maybe starting off with maybe discounts? Maybe the fees are at a certain rate? So that, to piggyback to what Mr. Shinsky said, so that we do have some of those cultural programs, and we do have some of those summer classes and, and attractions that can still keep our community here.
When you say discounts, on which side are you talking about?
On the side of maybe if like there's, like the art center is trying to do an event, let's say. And maybe they can get, maybe the nonprofits can get a discount on putting events that are free for their community, maybe that way.
Discount on what?
I think--
I like permits and things like that.
So you, you're saying use facilities?
Yes, access to facilities, maybe parks.
Discounts on permits--
Yes.
To incentivize more programs.
Exactly, yes.
That's a good idea.
Yes.
We do that for nonprofits.
We do that for nonprofits?
Yep.
At times?
It's at his discretion, which we told him to do it.
If, if there are nonprofits that the council's already supporting and providing funding for, then we often will waive their special event, temporary event fees and so forth, and I sign those off. I think what might be being discussed here is that if our building permit fee is $6,000 for some project, could more of that, you know, make it 7,800? And $200 goes towards arts. I think that might be part of, of the idea, or maybe as I was understanding it.
I think maybe that awareness, right, that nonprofits can get discounts on permitting and on the facilities, and maybe doing more outreach on, on that side of it, and making sure that they know that that's the process? Because I, I, you know, I honestly don't think a lot of people might know that.
Those we partner with do, but they're not--
It's not everything.
It's not, yeah, and it's not a building something, it's not very often those nonprofits are building something.
No, not in the building, but for using facilities.
Yeah. Yeah, we could talk about that, it's not real relevant to the arts discussion, but yeah, that, that happens, and we can get the word out or let them know.
So how mu-- how much money are we actually gonna bring in this year for public art through our permitting process?
Based on last year's--
Based on, yes, on last year's.
About 150,000.
150,000.
Per year?
Per year, and then some years we have 190,000, and this year was a little bit, about 150,000.
And, and how much are you anticipating when you start talking cultural arts and that stuff? Because it could vary based on, Bill knows that, depending on what kind of program you're doing. What are we talking about? $20,000, 30,000, 50,000?
So it depends how many we do it and how seriously we do it, so--
But to start, if you were to say, I'm gonna start, we're gonna get our feet wet, we need $30,000 in seed money.
So a chalk festival for three days is about 25,000 to 35,000, which we, last time we did it was, I believe, 2016, if I'm not mistaken, was 25,000. And that doesn't include the staff time.
It's a lot of expensive chalk.
Well, and on that, we were buying food and water and sanitation. And specifically on the chalk festival, the city, through the Tamale Festival, used to have one, and it wasn't, I don't think, paid for by the city. City of Palm Springs has done one. I was at the first one when I was a teenager. I participated in one in San Luis Obispo, started one in Paso Robles. It doesn't necessarily have to be funded by the public art fund. In some of those places, location spacing was done by corporate sponsors, you'd get a name on there. So there's different ways to team up, but the one that we did here in India, here at City Hall and around, it was mostly student oriented with, with professional artists, with the stipend. And then we had prize money, and then, of course, we paid for supplies, like you said, which we still have quite a bit of chalk.
Yeah, no, no, I was kinda a bit facetious. I didn't mean it to be that way, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I would have never thought that it would've been that expensive, to be honest with you. And then you, I forget about all the extra stuff that does. I, I'm not against looking at ways to be creative. I mean, I would rather look, me personally, at funding before we start asking the building industry to raise fees, because we're not even sure what we wanna do. Taking some of the money, like from the fines, from Golden Voice, from the concerts, and moving it towards some of the other stuff, be creative in what we're doing. It's money that we're not accounting for. And we've talked about doing some other projects, can we, can we do something like that? And then in the meantime, go back and look at what we're gonna do to, if we are gonna raise the rates, and if we are going to be able to bring more public art in there. It's gonna be a hard sell on stuff that's not feasible and tangible from the building industry, because they're, they're saying, we're giving you money to put something in.
Yeah, they wanna see it.
We wanna see it, we wanna feel it. So if you're gonna put an art piece over by, oh, Miles Park, let's say, and we're building houses around it, we're good, because that is gonna help us with it. You putting something, something else, I think it's just difficult for them to grasp that. And I've been with them for a long time, working with them in, in different capacities, that I just don't think-- And I've been with them for a long time, working with them in, in different capacities, that I just don't think they're gonna go for that, you know? So I think we need to be creative how we do it.
Question, i- if we were to say, we're gonna increase this fee, but it's still gonna be limited to permanent art?
They may, they may, but you know, I was gonna play devil's advocate and say, let's say they support us in doubling the fund, right? That's three hundred thousand dollars a year. Already, we have been informed by staff that our little budgets of fifty to seventy five thousand aren't getting us the quality of art that we really desire. I mean, we saw these pictures that were in the PowerPoint presentation, I'm like, yeah, sign me up, sign me up. But I know that our budget could never buy any one of those art pieces. So I practically would be blowing my whole year's budget just to get one of those art pieces as we stand. So we have to think about, you know, before we start deviating from physical art into cultural art or creative art, that we don't even have enough money for the first one, you know? Look at the art, look at the responses that we're getting, you're not getting the quality responses that you wanna see because of our little tiny budgets.
I, I agree, which is why we've asked you several times on a couple of projects for more and there's gonna be another ask, I think, later today for a park project. And rationale behind this specific project is, we like to cite, um, you know, I, I, we wanna, you know, as a city, I think, you know, we wanna entice development, we wanna have people here, but I think a lot of times we were like trying to place everything in downtown or trying to place something to bring someone there. And, uh, we have existing neighborhoods, we have existing parks that we need to explore, that we need to, you know, commit to being a part of, you know, an existing community as well. So like when we talk about the park that's at, um, what, forty six and I think what Shields or Madison? Is, is Shields over by C V Link, Linkup and everything is, is to have a budget where we could get an actual project, you know, for the community. And also to go see, and if you're on C V Link or if you're in the neighborhood or if you're at Madison School, you can go actually go view it as opposed to, I have to go downtown or I have to go to the edge of city limits or out by the freeway for something like that. And I do agree that the budgets we do put out for some of these are far, are fairly small. And historically, we had like a million dollars in the fund. And I know BIA said, you know, you need to spend that money. And so we, we actually ramped up the types of projects we did, the bigger projects we did, and we've drawn down the fund quite a bit. But I, I do agree that, you know, if we, if it takes a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars to get a good big piece of sculpture, that's all your money for the year, yeah.
I don't, I, I don't know, first of all, Lila, thank you for the presentation and thank you guys all for what you're doing, especially with the kind of budget you work with. And we're getting some historical perspectives of the handcuffs that you're on. Cause I, I didn't know, really know about the historical portion of it, but it does bring up a good point because, uh, these conversations maybe be ongoing, but this was written ten years ago. I wasn't sitting up here ten years ago, some of you were here ten years ago. I think our city has grown, so I think it may be time for another conversation with the building industry about maybe transitioning or implementing something not only in the short term, but in the future. Having some sort of, uh, forecast about how we wanna move forward in, in the future. But we don't have really any input or recommendation from the commission right now to say, okay, we wanna go talk to them, but what is the commission asking for? What do you, like, we wanna do cultural, we wanna do some performing, do we wanna partner with Golden Voice to do performing? We're not allowed to do that as, as we speak, right? So if you said, okay, well, if we, if we have a budget of this much, uh, more, we can do some partnering with Golden Voice downtown at the amphitheater, it's a city, uh, property, uh, it'd be cheaper to use here. So I think having a recommendation or, you know, some, you know, uh, so to speak, uh, requests that we can start having those conversations with the building industry and see, because they might say, you know what? We wanna be part of the growth that's going on in India, you know what? Because a lot of folks are coming here and it is about quality of life. But we don't want to have, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure we're, we all respect, uh, art in public places. We are the city of festivals, but we can't have art in public places with handcuffs on it. You know, so I think having that feedback from the commission moving forward, so we can have that conversation.
And I don't think he's putting you on the spot to give it to us now, because that's, that's your guys' conversation. But I think best case scenario would be if we could convince the BIA to double it. I think that's best case scenario. So if you guys could have a conversation around that, but keep in mind, I wanna see some of these types of arts. You know, I wanna stop seeing the little fifty thousand dollar thing that we couldn't agree on because we just didn't see it. We wanna see real pieces like these, so I don't know how you, I don't know how you get there, E J, I really don't, with a small budget.
Well, it's less projects at the end of the day. And, and you know, our, our timetable for everything, you know, I've been here a long time. It was like a year to get any project off the ground. So we'll identify the fund, you know, we say we wanna spend, you know, eighty to a hundred twenty thousand on a piece and we might not see it for a year and a half. And there'll be a twenty percent cost overrun by the time it gets there. So it gets to the budget that it may or may not have needed, but as opposed to doing six projects or three projects a year for the kind of money that we're talking, yeah, the amount that's in the fund is concerning, you know?
One thing that I was gonna mention is, you know, I think that develop, the relationship with Golden Voice and getting the large sculptures that we like has been working out really well, right? Where we only spend to do the installation. So I think that's been good for the large projects, I think.
But their fees for installation are outrageous.
They are.
Well, they install.
Well, and part of that is, is we have to pay for prevailing wage because it is a city project. So those types of things are on top, because of the scale that goes into these things, uh, the amount of concrete and all that, whether it's coming from building improvement or if it's coming from the art fund, it's, it's substantial. And labor goes up every year for prevailing wage.
But, but in other cases, we would have to pay for the art and the installation, right?
So. Um, correct, but, uh, an artist doing their own install might not have so much of that encumbered. Now, they have to have an outside sub or anything, then yeah, we run into that.
We get the quality of the art that we're getting from Golden Voice with our budget.
And, and so that leads, leads me on to my next point. You know, I, I've been a huge proponent of the chalk festival, things that bring kids and community together and, and it's enjoyable and it's fun and the little prizes. But, but given the concept of art funds, to have a significant piece, such as what you're talking about, in our community that draws, that makes a statement, that's bold, to me, is where I want those funds to go. Temporary is great, if we had several million dollars, terrific, I'd have that conversation, but we have limited funds. So let's get something that we have, as we have been doing for so many years since I've been on council, let's get something that, that is significant, that has staying power, that, um, that, that is more permanent, um, than spending the dollars on temporary. It's kinda my thought.
You know, our commission has been doing a great job with the murals in downtown and with the sculptures that we've been putting in. I think we got some really good feedback on, you know, like the one that the Frank and, I forgot the other guy's name, that just finished on the side of, in front of the, the cacti sculptures.
Zach Boils?
Yeah, Zach.
That one, we got really good feedback on those, on, on the sculptures there, Dr. Carrion sculptures. I think that really like bold, colorful, and it, it kinda really plays to our community, you know, we have a very young community out here and I think those fit in really well. And the murals also aren't as expensive as the sculpture projects, right? But they make a really big visual impact in our area. So I really do like that, that our, our commission has been focusing a lot on our downtown murals. Our community has been asking for that for a long time. So I think that's one area where we don't have to, uh, increase our funding so much, but we are still able to make a really big impact.
I, I will say that a mural that we could've gotten for thirty to thirty five thousand may go now for fifty or sixty, so there is that to, to consider, that, that much of an increase. And I just wanna put a little, little caveat on the, um, whether it's teaming up with Golden Voice or anything like that is something that I'd like to see, and other commissioners have talked about, is more community input, more tie-in, uh, ownership. If a, a piece is cited in a neighborhood or if it's in an, an area of downtown or wherever we put it, it would be helpful to have the people who are affected, who are gonna see it every day, be part of that and own up to it. So it's not the same as plunking down something in the neighborhood, it's like, oh, look what they've done to us, they've put this thing over here. Because if you can get community buy-in, you can get community support, then that's the first step for getting people to come look at it. We talk, and I mentioned this earlier and I know it's on some people's mind, is art tourism. I'm on the old end of millennials and that's pretty much one hundred percent of my travel budget is going to music festivals, art events, art, art happening type things all over the place. And one hundred percent of the places that I go, they are, um, community supported. It's, it's the community that's putting it on, it's the community that started something, whether if you've heard of like Meow Wolf, which started in Santa Fe with the local artists or different festivals, like I just came from one in Oakland. If you can get, if, if the people who are already here, who are already working in the arts or people in the neighborhood and they have an idea about something or they have a concept, listen to them, definitely team up with them to bring something here. We do talk a lot about, on the commission, about working with Golden Voice. And one of the things, if you wanna do that in the future, I think you should think about is, um, the construction materials that they use are not designed to last more than a year in most cases. Having worked on a couple, I know that they may have a, a great structure underneath them, but they're covered in plywood in a lot of cases, or foam in one case of a sculpture that we considered. And they're just not built to last. Sir Balakay over at Dr. Carrion, that plywood is not going to last, we're already having replacement issues and paint issues and there's an expensive upkeep just to pay for that. Do you know what the amount that we've put yearly, is it thirty thousand?
I believe it's sixty nine thousand for yearly.
Up to seventy thousand dollars a year that we're gonna spend on meat.
That's half our budget.
So that's something to consider when you wanna talk about working with, you know, Paul Clemente's office over at Golden Voice is, we'd like to do something with you, it needs to last ten years, fifteen years.
At what point do you think you want to have community input? Would you want to have it before the Arts Commission makes a decision or after? I mean, at what point?
Honestly, I'd like to see it before we even propose a site or propose a project. It would be very nice to have someone from each of your district come and say, these are the things that we'd like. I have a friend who grew off a tourmaline and, and the, the, and she said, we used to have a mural of a pachuco on the side of the gas station. Somebody has it, can we get it back? You know, and that just kinda dropped nowhere. I think the attorney down the street might actually have it rolled up in his office, so, um, but there's people in neighborhoods that wanna see something in their neighborhood. Maybe they don't, but if they do, you know?
The people, the residents will tell us what they would like to see. I mean, they live there, they're gonna see it every day. So they, they really should have input. This whole discussion of community input started in the mid seventies when there was a hubbub because of a piece, a federal piece went into a neighborhood, the neighborhood just didn't know about it, it just appeared. Well, the G S A changed their whole program to include neighborhood input from that point on because people really did raise a stink about the piece that went into their neighborhood.
You talking about a Richard Serre piece?
No, it was, I forget who, I think it was a Calder piece, but.
How, how do you all see that you can be able to reach more of our community residents for your meetings? Because I, I also see, if, if you guys are the planning commission, right? So you guys should be out in the community.
We're the Arts Commission, yes.
Sorry, Arts Commission, but you guys should be out and getting that input for the community when you have those items, right? Putting it online, trying to talk to other artists and seeing what's going on. So wha- what is your guys' process at the moment for gathering that community?
Well, I mean, right now we have our, our public notification, a Facebook page and that's it. I'd like to lean on council, either with doing, um, um, what's the?
The neighborhood thing?
The neighborhood meetings or anything, in this, in each of your districts. Uh, and, and if you have neighborhood meetings or if you're doing a neighborhood cleanup or if you're having any kind of interaction with people in your districts, um, cause I think two of us live in one district already as it is.
But like the neighborhood site, website, you know, put it on there, folks.
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor, whatever, whatever, yeah, well.
Yeah, the Arts, the Arts Commission.
And the Arts, Arts Commission was looking for input on what you would like to see in your neighborhood pertaining to public art. Give us your suggestions.
The police department and the city have their own Nextdoor page, you guys can have your own page as well.
We have it on Facebook, I know that.
Yeah, but a Nextdoor as well.
People will, people will sit at home and input, but they won't come to a meeting, a live meeting.
Right, yeah. I, I make that, we, we can have meetings, we can have discussions for a year, we can go, uh, to R F P, we can go to contract, we can get drawings submitted, we can get approval and everything. We can get all the way up to the day that it's installed and unveiled and then we'll get our complaints. And then they'll, and, and I, I think every time that I talk about it, as talking about the fund, is, um, and everyone needs to beat that same drum is, you know, every time we put up a sculpture, it's not, we can't fill a pothole or pay a policeman's salary. It's, it's this fund and this is what it's for and it's for the quality of life and enrichment of neighborhood and everything.
I'm gonna ask, at what point is too many murals, too many murals?
The point right now, we've already had to decommission so many because of the quality that we have less than we've ever had before.
Right, but, you know, originally the mural project started as a downtown Indio Chamber of Commerce way to bring people downtown. Now it's expanding, but at what point do we say that's enough murals and focus on other things?
I mean, that's, that's a valid question. If anything, my initial response would be when there is a mural in every neighborhood. Because every neighborhood has, has a building of some sort that could be a place where a good mural could exist.
Yeah, but not everybody likes murals and, and, you know, I'm the supporter of the people that don't like murals. So that's why I'm asking, because not everybody likes murals.
Well, I'm not a great fan of them myself, but I still think that, that a lot of people do.
They, and murals can tell a story, mur- murals can evoke an emotion, so I'm curious as to, they can tell a story about the community or they can be frivolous and, and, and be of a, you know, a completely different genre of music or whatever, so.
Yeah, you're not gonna change their mind, in their opinion, it's just graffiti, it doesn't matter what it says or does. So you're not gonna change their mind, but there is a segment of the community that does not like murals, doesn't understand why we waste city money on it.
Yeah, some, some people in our city that don't like police. So, we're not, we, we ain't gonna please everybody, you know?
No, but I'm just saying, it's not a hundred percent mural supported.
Yeah, I, I just, I just think, you know what, is a valid point was made earlier about the community involvement. You drop a mural of something in the community and they have no clue what it is or what it stands for or represents, you might get some pushback. But if you put this mural back of a community member who was very influential as India was, you know, grown into what it has become now, people might love it. So the community involvement is, is very big. And on the, the other side of the token is part of that community involvement say, you know what? Maybe we don't need a mural on this side of town, you know? Maybe you keep it over by one eleven in downtown, but right here, we're good. I'm okay with that as well, cause it's community involvement.
Yeah, you're gonna find some places and some neighbors will want it and you're gonna find the person that complains about every single one, so.
I mean, we could put a nice big mural right in the middle of Heritage Palms and, um, I think our council member would.
Well, it's on the south side, I don't care. Yeah, oh, and the south, so it'll get burnt off, that's, that's where we put your Jim Morrison mural.
Yeah, see, but you know, downtown and, and, and you know, I think that was, the whole concept is keeping it downtown and I, I like to see murals downtown, small ones, big ones, um, you know, a, a diverse kind of mural, not just the same thing that we always, always been doing.
I will say that you're gonna wanna focus on north side walls because they burn off the south side from the exposure, the east and the west and all that. Yeah, so.
But, but it's gotta be more than downtown, I think it's commercial areas, I would like to broaden it. I, you know, certainly I love downtown and I'll take all the murals, but, but I think commercial, uh, applications and locations for murals are, yeah, yeah.
We've, we've, you know, we've moved towards miles, uh, on the quick and easy building. We've asked, um, a store that's over by the DMV, they were not interested. We have another store that's on the, uh, north side of the railroad tracks, it is interested, it's a north facing wall. So there, there are opportunities, but that doesn't get very far from downtown. And so, um, yeah, we're open to any suggestions, especially like we said, neighborhoods and communities, uh, you know, every community is ringed by a wall nowadays. The wall can be something.
But, but I, I say this before and I'll say this again, if we main, if we build it, we gotta be able to maintain it. And one of the reasons we lost all our murals is we didn't put any money into maintaining them and keeping them up. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm actually kinda appalled at the seventy nine thousand dollars or sixty nine thousand dollars we spent on those, I call them the teepees over at Dr. Carrion Park. We've gotta take that into account and it can't come from the Art Commission. I mean, it's like any other maintenance, it's gotta be put into something else and we really gotta think twice about if we're gonna really put a piece of art like that. I love it, I think it's great, but it's seventy nine thousand dollars coming out of our, our, our budget that could've been utilized for other stuff. So we really gotta think these things through and I'm, I'm all for public input, but that's kinda like, we have the commission. Because when you go to those meetings, and I go to them all the time too, and different stuff, you get the same people that come in ninety nine percent of the time. They come in, they'll talk and you can put things online and then somebody doesn't like it anyways and we get blasted. We're more worried about what the one or two people say than the twenty or thirty other ones. So that's why the five of you as.
So that's why the five of you as on the commission are making those decisions for us. And I'm not against you guys going out and getting input, but whose do you listen to? So if they're fifty-fifty and they don't like any of them, do you guys stop? Do you make the decision to go forward? Or do you take what they have and decide to stop and not do anything because they told you what to do, basically, by saying it? And if you put one up, are you, are you gonna, are they gonna come back to you and say, we told you we didn't like that mural? You decided to put it up, we don't want it here. So you open up a can of worms when you ask a lot of other people too, so remember that. I understand that and which is one of the reasons why we go to you guys for approval. Hey, we're appointed, you're elected. But you know. And I think, I've been on the council fifteen years and I think we've overridden the planning commission three times and I think we've overridden the Art Commission twenty times. So there's gotta be a give and take where it comes back. I don't wanna be, to be honest with you, involved with the art. It's really your guys' call, but we do have to make the decisions based on it. So somehow we gotta get the, the mesh together where you guys make that decision and we rubber stamp it and move on, because you guys are the artists. I, I will say, as far as involvement goes, and we talked about the murals and you did talk about maintenances, a lot of those murals predated the Arts, Art Commission. So what happened was, those murals were never intended probably to be up for five to ten more years just because of the way that they had prepared those walls. And that was always the problem we had, whether it was the Clark's Gas Station or if it was the Date History Mural. And so those walls were always just bad and they were never, so when we, we did do a DX session, we actually had to write a DX session policy. We didn't have one for getting rid of public art. We actually did do an online survey and we used that as an input. We didn't say, you know, the votes are there, here's the votes. We said, these are the ones, the community who responded, we had a lot of responses. They were, they felt very strongly and they actually told us why they liked it. And then there was the people that said, I don't like public art, I don't like murals, get rid of all the murals, buff them all out. So we do take that into account, you know, when I see someone that says, I hate murals and I go, okay. We listen, we listen, we listen, I'm not being facetious, but what I'm saying is, we can do something like that where we get more than just the five of us. But if we go back to the building, the DVBA or BIA, DVBA is out here. And we tell them that we want to up the fee, but we're paying eighty thousand dollars to maintain a piece that in ten years is gonna cost us eight hundred thousand dollars. They're gonna look at us like, you're not budgeting and utilizing your money right, cause you had eight hundred thousand dollars on a, a piece of art that you had, it's temporary, that you spent eight hundred thousand on, it costs you two hundred thousand dollars to install. So we do gotta think better about what we do and what we put in and how it's gonna cost us if we're gonna go back and ask them for more money. Because that would be six or seven beautiful art pieces of a hundred thousand each, if we didn't have to spend that money.
If, if the city is, wants to maintain that relationship with Golden Voice of, of taking a piece per year, then I really think it's important that when the pieces are chosen for the festival, that there is representation from the city, the Arts Commission, and whatever piece is chosen and you work with the artist and it is constructed from material that will last.
Amen.
Well, the dog we have, I mean, that's a good example of something that's gonna last.
It's metal.
Yeah, and we can be selective, we don't have to accept everything they offer us.
And we don't, and we don't have to take one every year either.
And especially if it costs us more than it's worth, we're not gonna, you know, if that information was provided to us ahead of time, we wouldn't have accepted it.
Uh, like, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm a materials person in construction, I work in steel and, you know, I bring up the questions is, what is this gonna be prepared with, how is this gonna be finished, what's the material's gonna be? I ask that of everyone that wants to do a sculpture here, because, you know, I, we've got people that wanna come out and they have, you know, we've had muralists describe five different types of paint that don't work together and it's like, well, hang on, that doesn't work on you. So as a commission, you know, we've got artists, we've got people who work with the materials and we say, you know, this is gonna work and this might not work. And when we talk about partnering with Golden Voice, like you said, yeah, that has to be part of the discussion is, what do you plan to build this thing out of, because it has to be there for fifteen years or more, whatever you want. And as far as dealing with the, the building industry is, everything has to be maintained, whether it's your home, whether it's your curbs and gutter, whether it's any of that sort of stuff. So there is going to be a cost associated with that and if we could figure out how to keep that cost low, with better sort, you know, and that might drive the cost of the piece up at the beginning of the day, but at the end of the day, we're not spending as much replacing and repainting and all that sort of stuff. That needs to be part of that plan if we do acquire an outside piece.
And Glenn mentioned something earlier, earlier today, that with the RFP process, if we could be a little more targeted, like provide more guidance, because sometimes, uh, we can see that there's a lot of different, um, pieces that come through that are completely different, right? And we might get fifteen of them and we'll like one of them because they chose a certain theme, right? But if they would have known that theme in the beginning, maybe it would have been less people that are, or we, we just don't wanna be, uh, we don't wanna be wasting artists' time.
When we're not gonna consider it.
Yeah, so maybe just providing more guidance and, and more targeted RFPs so that we're getting what we want.
What do you mean guide?
So if we're having a mural, we're saying, you know what, we're looking for a Jim Morrison mural downtown, so.
You're talking thematic.
So a pop culture, you know, theme, yes, something like that.
Thematic, you know, as a commission decide what you're looking for in an area and then take it out to the artist population, instead of just taking it out to the artist population and saying, what do you wanna put here? Because I think it has to come from us as the people that are here, kind of what we think would fit here.
Uh, two points to that, just cause some we changed, uh, early days when we did our first couple of murals, we got the David Garcia mural, is people would come to downtown and they would see, all we had was history murals. So every application we got was just history murals. And we said, okay, history's great, I'm a big nerd for history, for especially downtown Indio, but that's not what we're going for. And so we were trying to leave it more open-ended to the artists. So like on the first one, we said, we want you to build from the history and go out. And then as far as the Hummingbird mural from, uh, Nicole Ponslar, we said, we didn't put anything, but we did give a context of the site. We said, you know, this is Miles Avenue Park, we said, you know, this is the original home of the Date Festival, there was a baseball field, where we did all kinds of stuff that they could pull from. Some of the artists used it, none of the artists used it, I don't know. But, um, we can put that kind of information there if that's what you guys want.
We think it would help.
Okay.
Do you think it would help for your process?
If we have something specifically they would wanna do, yeah.
It provides context, but at the same time, I, you know, I just question the creative component, um, of the artist, right? Who, who has a visual of a particular area, because presumably they're gonna come out, they're gonna look at the site, they're gonna look at everything around the site. Um, artists generally are extremely creative, um, but grounded individuals. And so, so I would hate to also stifle that creativity. I, I, I've had that conversation before, thematic, but I hate to put too many parameters around, you know, what an artist does to begin with, I, I don't know.
I think every artist takes whatever anybody says and interprets it.
Right.
So whether, yeah, they'll interpret it, they'll interpret it.
I think if the theme is a little cryptic.
Yeah, no, not cryptic.
Works best.
No, no, well, just kind of, just kind of give them a sense.
Well, no, I mean, it's like, you can say, the theme is energy. You're gonna get all sorts of interpretations of energy.
Well, I mean, it's like this, we have, say, just, just speaking right now, we have a mural right here downtown and you said, you went out RFP and you said, you know what, we have all these local celebrities who came out of Indio. Give me something that we could dedicate to them that'd be up for five years. You know, we, we have a plethora of them, right now we have, uh, Jenna Ortega, who's big. You have every kid down here taking pictures with their parents, you know, so just think, I, I think like things like that would be big, you know? And I, I always say pop culture, but, you know, I'm not an artist, but, you know, there's things like that, I think if you just put it out there, it's, it's part of history, you know, but it's still modern, it's, yeah.
Yeah. And I, you know, there are fewer old timers from the downtown area that remember downtown, so we need to build off that. There are kids growing up now who don't know about some of the hangouts and all the other places that were here. And you can either memorialize some of them or you could move on and start something new, um, you know, something that you visit. I went to this business across the street, there was this mural and I'd take my kids or whatever. For instance, uh, my girlfriend takes me to see the Fremont Troll in Seattle all the time.
Yeah.
And I have no time to the thing, but because she goes to Seattle.
Short on time.
Sorry, we run out of time?
No, 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 we're not short on time, but, um, what do you think about incorporating into your decisions the fact that we want the art to be, come socially viral? So whatever you do consider, think of the social aspect as far as photography or interaction. Something that people will come and see a piece and it will be, it will lend itself to be a social media backdrop. Or it will lend itself to be a social media, uh, video or TikTok that'll go viral. Can you kind of think about that as you're choosing pieces as well? Like the youngins that are coming to see the art, they wanna post everything on social media. Is the art that you're selecting lending itself to that is the question?
Well, I, I think if a strong.
Like our butterfly on the Lomelinda thing.
Or the Indio sign.
But that, that is so trendy and gets old so quickly.
It's not gonna die.
But it's, that, that's here to stay though.
No.
Social media is gonna be here to stay.
They told me it was gonna die.
It's the MySpace.
Yeah, MySpace.
May, I was just gonna state that I think some work, uh, that we could do is to survey other cities' fees. I think that would be informative for the commission to review and see where we're at relative to some other cities. That might lead to some communications with the building community to see if you wanna adjust that. I don't believe the fee now has a cola, but this discussion of, of the costs of, um, art increasing, just the supplies and, and services, I think that would just be reasonable, in other words, if it just went.
We tried to put a CPI, they said no.
Yeah, that's right, sometimes we have to say this is a priority.
James is tougher than Ed Naby was.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's a decision that, you know, sometimes we have to be, be firm that way. But I think that's some research that we could bring back and the commission could review. It looks like a little more money needs to come to bear. Now, as the city manager, any of the city mana, city manager, we are protective of the general fund. This last year, we had to set aside an additional two million dollars just for the fire department. So if there's a, uh, you know, if we're seeking other funds from the general fund to supplant and add to this, just know there's an opportunity cost. So do we take one police officer position or one firefighter position, one paramedic to help pay for additional arts? I think if our fees are low enough, the priority or my recommendation would be, let's see if we can move that up just slightly to meet the needs and the desires of the council and the commission. Many in the community won't understand it, but I think they'll appreciate it, as Mr. Shensky said, once it's done.
Two more points, um, can we leverage some of the funds with grant opportunities? Do we have the ability to do that? Do we still have a grant writer?
We do have a grant writer and there are opportunities from time to time, they're, they're not always huge. I think we may do better with some other nonprofits, maybe even as EDC, we're more competitive. Many grant foundations and grantors will see a city and say, well, why are you asking us for money? So it might be some other entity, a partner entity that could assist us with those, those grants. Something new, like a new revenue, like the fines, I think we've already spent it three times, but the fines from, uh, from Golden Voice, uh, those could be set aside and said, hey, if there's ever any fine, we're gonna put it towards public art, that could be your call and it's not a bad, bad idea.
I just think we need to look outside the box and, and the other, the other thing is, when we're looking at these things, I mean, that's what, you know, I mean, the one cent sales tax we did, Measure X, Measure E, we said it'd be one-time money. I mean, to spend twenty-five or thirty thousand, not on a chalk thing, but on an art piece that's gonna be a part of a community, I don't see that as being a stretch, to me personally, I don't wanna make it a habit. But, you know, it, it is part of what we said to the community is that we were gonna take that money and put it back into roads and other stuff. So to take forty or fifty or sixty thousand dollars and enhance an art piece that's gonna make a part of our city better, like maybe by the Auto Mall, by the, by, uh, Jackal branch or somewhere like that, I don't see that being a stretch. Uh, you know, if we're gonna take two hundred thousand or four hundred thousand out of it, that'd be a different story. But enhancing a piece because we know it's gonna be a focal point of our community, I think that's what the funding is partly for. Not to get carried away, but, you know, like I said, that's what, that's what it's there for, is the one-time art pieces.
He's talking about Measure X, matching funds.
Measure X, Measure E, one-time funding.
Matching funds.
Cause that's what we said we'd do.
But before we wrap this up, because we do have to go to closed session, can each council member have at least a couple of minutes to give their final thoughts? Because I know some of us are in different positions than others. To the, to the Arts Commission as far as what you hope to see.
You know, honestly, I guess I, I wanna go back to the Arts Commission to say, what, or what did we hope to accomplish all of us at this meeting? Because we were presented with a lot of options, do we want temporary art, so on and so forth? And, and, and so I'm not sure we discussed all the different elements, so I, I, I'm struggling a little bit on that one piece. As much as I'd like to see temporary art, I'd like to see, I, I'd like to see whatever useful dollars that we have or available dollars spent more on something permanent. Community input to a point, I think, um, I agree with that, I'm a mural person, but significant art pieces, I think, in, in specific areas have a huge impact on the community and I'd like to see that. But I, I'm just sitting here thinking, how, how do we help? What are we looking to provide the Arts Commission in terms of direction? And do, they talked about a master plan.
Yeah, they talked about.
You know, do we want them to do a master plan? I think we just spent a year and a half doing a strategic plan that was eighty-two pages long. I'm not sure what happened to that, are there elements we can take out of that? So I, I think there's a lot more answers they probably need as a result of the initial request for information.
I think the presentation was too ambitious.
It needed, you know, it needs a, a four hour, yeah. Um, I, I, I don't know, a master plan, I, how does, I know how a master plan's going to help, but at the same time, you know, I'm, I'm not sure we should spend the time and the resources. My two cents.
We do have a master plan.
For art, really?
Yeah.
Is that the same place as the parking?
Exactly.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
And there's somebody's desk filled with dust.
Yeah.
I, I think I spoke, I spoke enough already, I just, uh, um, like with the presentation, going back to the presentation, I just think we need to just pull from there and see what we, what's feasible right now and then what's feasible in the future. And that's how that future laying, laid out. And I think we need to all collaborate on, on community outreach in our districts with our, and I know I need to do a, a better job with the Arts Commission, sometimes we focus on what's going on in our day-to-day and then we come at you, well, you need to be doing this and you've been doing it for three years already. And so I apologize for that, but I, I think the collaboration is gonna be good and I think we're growing. A lot of these master plans and things that we keep talking about, and they say there's dust on them, that's true, there's dust on them, they're ten, fifteen years old. Indio in twenty-twenty-three is different than it was a few years ago because we're even coming out of COVID, right? So, um, a lot of things have changed. So I, I like to see the commission come back to council with some requests so we can have those conversations with the building industry. Uh, council member Amit said, we might talk to them about doubling it. I mean, and they might say, yeah, let's go, because Indio's growing and we haven't made any, uh, adjustments since, within ten years. So, um, I know sometimes we could be very critical, but we do appreciate the work, I do. Um, there's some good stuff going on out there and we'll just keep growing together, so.
I think there was a lot of good information, but I think it didn't get rolled out as how you guys wanted to come out. I think we, I don't have a problem with the code modification, if we can find the funding, as long as it doesn't take away from art pieces that we wanna do that's permanent. I think we need to get our, uh, status quo in what you guys wanna actually see, what it is it's gonna cost, what's your budget you're looking at based on what we have and what's available, and then figure out how we can fill in the gaps. Uh, I think that's the best way to do it and hopefully, it, when some of these art pieces are coming up, I agree with, with, uh, some of my council members. Like downtown, there was fifteen different murals, all different themes, I understand art is by the beauty of the holder, but it was in a strategic location that wanted to be utilized, part of that. And I don't think that the company and the businesses that are there like the pieces that we actually picked. So here we get ourselves into another position where the city council might weigh in on something based on information that could have probably been changed or the artist could have done some other stuff. So I think you need to come back to us, tell us what you want and see how the city of Indio can fill in the gaps for you. Because I don't wanna be able to involve in art other than to approve what you guys feel is in the best interest of our community as a whole.
Um, so I'm, again, a big proponent of physical art because we have such limited funds. I don't really wanna see us diversify into anything else and not even murals. I, I am supportive of doubling the fee if we can convince the BIA to get on board with us. It would be great if we could leverage those funds, I mean, maybe we do end up committing a certain amount of matching funds from our pot of money, but we are so limited and I would like to see you guys have higher budgets for your proposals because I do wanna see art like what we saw in the presentation. You know, that's, to me, it makes a statement and it's worth it to me because that's the kind of art that will continue to be talked about if it's making a statement. It's not just something visually appealing as somebody passes by. So I would hope that we could focus that direction now that we have limited funds and, um, I think that's it. Oh, and I support a one-year, uh, plan, work plan because bodies change too often and just like, um, was mentioned, you know, the master plans, they feel that they may not be relevant, but I will let you all know that when we created the master plans, we projected Indio to be at a hundred and fifty thousand people and we projected Indio to be built out much more than it is now. So those master plans, we haven't met that level yet, so those master plans are still relevant. We just have to find the money.
I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, to our.
I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, to our staff and the Arts Commission. I think we've been getting a lot of really good feedback from the work that you've all been doing around, especially the downtown area, and all the new projects and murals and things getting improved. So just want to thank you for that first. I do think that keeping the code the same for the moment looks like it would be the best, at least for the how we're gonna use that pot of money and increasing that pot of money through through the increased fees there. But then also looking at how do we reach out to artists and nonprofits to let them know that we are able to, you know, work with them to be used, to use facilities or reduce permits, or what other ways that the city can help and make sure that we're getting that information out to the community. I think one thing that I really think is really important, which we've brought up before, is the sustainability of the projects, right? So learning, this is the first time I've heard that, that it costs that much to maintain the serbolicay, right? And so keeping that in mind, I think for all of us in in these projects and looking at the sustainability, financial sustainability of these projects is gonna be really important. I think for the event side of it, I do think maybe we should start thinking about what's one event that the the Arts Commission would like to do, right? And just start bringing in the idea, and let's get, let's get the brainstorming going, and then we'll find, we'll see where we can find funding for that, whether that's through corporate sponsorships, whether that's grants, nonprofits, whatever it is. But I think getting that initial, what's the one, first one that we can start off with and get the ball rolling there? And yeah, I think the other side is bringing in community input. I think, you know, both of our commissions can work on that and see how we can bring in. First, I think there's the targeted input, right, from artists, directly from artists that you trust, people that you trust in the community, and then the general input when you put it out to social media or town, town halls, that kind of events. That's it. I think that's all I got. And we gotta go into closed session. So thank you for joining us. Really appreciate it. Appreciate your work, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
End of closed session.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan.
And I was mad when we couldn't keep the marquee from the theater. The Latin, oh man, when it burned down the building, I wanted to keep that so bad, the marquee. So I I seen some cool pictures, old theater pictures of Indio. People wouldn't even believe that that was Indio back in the in those days, like. Yeah. I did, I did you post any of those, any of the? I seen somebody have posted. Nice.
Is the what?
Yeah.
Closed session?
Yep.
All righty.
All right.
She'll she'll make it.
Yeah. All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order for our closed session. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor, for the record, all council members are present.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
None, Mayor.
Any abstentions for today? Nothing?
For closed session? No, not off a smir.
All right, then we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
From our distinguished attorney.
I'll thank you all for having me up on the back.
World of knowledge.
We tried to tell him that we didn't want you.
I was ready to answer one legal question, which was can we use development back these for performance art?
Okay, stop. Do you ready? Yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us today. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Furman?
Present.
Councilmember Holmes?
Present.
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ramos Amit?
Present.
And Mayor Ortiz?
Present. Thank you. And next, we have our invocation from Pastor Christian Sly from Garden Fellowship Church. Please stand.
Lord, thank you so much that we just get to you. Lord, as citizens, be a part of the government. Lord, as we celebrated this month, the birth of our nation, Lord, I ask that you would fill with your Spirit, God, those that lead our city. God, those that faithfully serve to keep us safe, Lord, and to carry out just vision and insight to grow our community. God, I ask that you give him wisdom and patience and just your heart for this place. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Up next, we have our pledge of allegiance. And today, we have someone special joining us. We have Ariana Herrera, incoming third grader from Amelia Earhart Elementary. She's a top student and winner of awards for her kindness to others. Ari's passion is dance and musical theater. She recently performed in her dance studio's recital, taking the stage, taking the stage five numbers. A Girl Scout, Ari is proud to sing the National Anthem at various events. Oh, and by the way, her mom is Marcia Herrera, principal of Indio Middle School. And her grandmother is Mary Perry, the DSUSD Public Information Officer. Thank you all for joining us. And Ariana, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, sorry, next up, we have a presentation, our quarterly update by Ron Phillips of Desert Theater Works.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councilmembers, guests. I'm Ron Phillips, CEO of Desert Theater Works. I'm stopping by today with a very quick update, mostly about our educational programs that we do. As you know, the last time we spoke, we were preparing for our summer camp, which we were hoping we could get two to 300 students to attend in two different tracks. We have 350.
Wow.
So it was really successful and well-received, and we plan to grow it again next year. The program was done in two, two-week segments, two weeks in June and two weeks in July, different students each time. And it's wrapping up this Friday, so I encourage all of you to come by between 1:00 and 7:00 o'clock and see one of their performances.
Cool.
So we're very happy with the turnout. We also, this is a partnership with Desert Sands Unified School District through their Extended Learning Opportunities programs. Through Track B, we found out that because of the wonderful facilities we have at the Indio Performing Arts Center, we serve three meals per day to all of the students that attend our camps. And that's something that will continue through spring and summer and fall of next year.
Awesome.
So that's another exciting improvement and something additional that we can offer here to the, to the community.
Thank you.
Then we also talked about our onsite education that we're doing at several sites throughout Desert Sands. Last year, we had seven sites. In the 23-24 school year, we have 17 sites. So it's grown substantially. We'll be, it's TK through eighth grade. And we'll be teaching socio-emotional learning techniques through theater performance and art. Some of the schools were actually doing performances at their location. So 30-minute, 60-minute shows at their sites. So that's another nice improvement and to see theater coming back in a big way. The only other update I have for you is our theater season will begin in October. It seems we're doing very, very well. Everyone is excited to return this year. We're doing some improvements to the building. We're working with staff on a wish list of things that need to be done, but everything's looking up.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any questions?
Was there any electrical issues, if I recall, from the past?
There was. Those have all been addressed.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
For providing those services for our residents. I know our families really appreciate it, and we hear really good things. So thank you. Any other?
You know what? I pack, Desert Theater Works has always been near and dear to my heart. So appreciate it, love the shows, love the programs, love what you do for the kids. Just keep it going, keep it rolling, because you're doing a phenomenal job.
Well, thank you for providing the facility, because that, the facility really makes what we're doing and the capacity that we can take on makes it possible. So if we didn't have the kitchens and the four theaters in the large facility, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So we really appreciate the City of Indio and its residents.
Is there anything we can do to help you? I mean, more? I mean, if we had a wish list, is there something we could?
Talk to city managers.
Oh, go ahead. We already got their wish list.
We got a wish list together, yeah.
Go ahead. Well, we appreciate all you do. I hear nothing but great reviews from everybody that attends your shows, let alone the youth that you help. But I mean, the programs that you put on, the shows you put on, people are coming from all over the Coachella Valley because they've heard about the quality of them. So thank you.
Thank you. Youth education is one of the things I'm most proud of that we do on behalf of Desert Theater Works.
And I saw one of your teachers, Stephanie, she's been performing out in LA now, right?
Yes, she is.
It's a great career pathway that you're building up for RV.
We've got a new student right here.
Oh, nice.
Get a new student right here.
That's great.
Thank you all very much. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Thanks.
All right, and we're gonna skip over to our appointments. We're gonna go a little bit out of order here. So we're gonna go on to 8.1, 2023 Voting Delegate and Alternate for the Annual Conference General Assembly in Sacramento.
Who's going?
I'll be there.
You going, Oscar?
Yes. Yeah, I can be the vote, voting member.
So it'll be both of us.
And Wayman can be the alternate.
Sure.
I'm good with that.
Do we need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Holmes. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll move on to our next appointment, which is appointment of David Getka to the Sustainability Commission, nominated by Councilmember Elaine Holmes. Would you like to introduce them?
I would love to. David, if you wouldn't mind, please come up to the podium and introduce yourself and your, your background and why you desire to be part of this commission.
Good evening. Is that better? Good evening, everybody. My name is Dave Getka. My wife and I moved here to Indio from Beaumont about a year ago in July. I don't know why we moved in July, but that's the way it worked out. I was very involved up in Beaumont with some of their community committees and city committees. You have my bio, so you know some of that. I want to thank Council Lady Elaine Holmes for nominating me for this position and then also appreciate your consideration on the confirmation of it. So. So if you have any questions of myself or you'd like to ask?
Welcome.
I can talk more if you'd like.
If you're on sustainability, we can talk a lot, but we'll help. I can talk about that all day. But no, we appreciate your, your service to our residents in this way. So really appreciate you offering to help us out in that commission. Very, very much.
And it just starts with that commission, because it'll grow, I promise you, yes.
Well, I have no intentions for elected office, so just, you can rest assured.
He says that, yeah. So if I can make a motion, please, to appoint David Getka to the Sustainability Commission?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Holmes and a second from Councilmember Miller. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Congratulations and welcome to the Sustainability Commission.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then stop. Are you gonna do the?
Both at the same time, right?
Yeah, we could do both at the same time.
Yeah, I'll just step aside.
All right, thank you. So our next appointment, 8.3, we're gonna do appointment of Daniel Trevino to the Mobile Home Far, sorry, Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission, nominated by Councilmember Glenn Miller.
Yeah, I've known Mr. Trevino for a while, a great young man. And he talked to me a little while ago about getting involved with the city that he's been from and enjoys, and we had this opening, and I'd like to bring him up. He's here to say a few words, tell us a little about himself and what he's doing now. Very exciting, and I'm happy to have him be a part of the Indio family.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers for having me here. Thank you, Glenn Miller, for appointing me to this commission. I am born and raised in the City of Indio. I have lived here, here my entire life. I was born at JFK Hospital down the street. Only left for college and law school, and now I'm back in the desert. And I have some real estate and legal background, and I hope I can contribute that to the city. And I think this is a good start, so I want to give back. And this is, I think, a good start for that.
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
And where are you working at?
I am working at the Law Offices of Quintanilla and Associates. So we represent Ranch Raj and Moreno Valley. So I'm a deputy city attorney there. And I know Stephen. Yeah.
That's awesome.
I know Stephen, so.
And you're born, Indio raised, and came back home to help our community.
Yeah.
Can't be a better story than that.
Great background for that commission. So really appreciate you also offering to help our community in this way and serving in this commission.
Of course, looking forward to it. I know it'll bring some challenges and some long meetings, but it's fine.
Now the young gentlemen like to move up. So I'd like to make the motion to put Daniel Trevino into our Mobile Home Practices Commission. Make that motion. All right.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Furman. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations and thank you again.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and, yeah, we're gonna do the oath.
If I can have both gentlemen over, oh, you, please just stand here, so I can.
Sure.
Get you both, and then just raise your right hand and then repeat after me. Aye, and then state your name.
Aye.
At the same time, or?
Yes.
Aye, Daniel Trevino.
David Getka.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties I am about to enter.
The duties I am about to enter.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. I know, right? Like the military. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move up to, we'll move back up on the agenda to item number four, City Attorney Report on Closed Session. City Attorney?
Mayor, the report on a closed session is, we have no reportable action on 3.1, 3.2. The city council gave direction by vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. We'll move, we'll move on to City Manager Reports and Information.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, in an interest of time, a reminder of our Food Truck Fridays here downtown on Bliss in Town. Sorry, at 5:00, at the request of our organizer, she liked to go until 11:00 PM. Things are a little more, so we're looking at 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Last week, one of the hottest days, the hottest day of the year, had the highest turnout at Food Truck Fridays. Over 1,100 people were here participating.
1,100?
1,100.
Sorry, City Manager.
Well, at night.
At 5:00, do we get a lot of people, or are they?
No.
Should we move at 6 to 11?
It's, it's convenient for the fire team before they go home to do all the inspections, and so that's the primary reason for that. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And just Second Saturdays, before we meet again, we will have our next Second Saturday. That'll be on Miles and Smur at 7:00 PM, a little bit later, to take advantage of the cooler temperatures later in the evening.
Nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
And is that gonna be going till 11:00 as well?
10:00.
10:00, okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. We'll move on to Report on City Council External Board Meetings. Ms. Holmes?
You know, all my meetings were dark. 'Tis the season, it's summertime, so so many things are dark right now. Attended the Second Saturday, went to the food truck park, as illustrated by 1,100 folks that went, particularly at night. I've stopped by a couple of times at night. It's pretty exciting. Encourage everyone to come out. There's lots of fun things here in the City of Indio. You know, and, and that's my report right now.
Right.
No commissions.
Thank you.
I have a brief report, and I made a promise, I'm not gonna talk too much today. So I was lying. I, I, I did have a Coachella Valley Economic Partnership meeting this morning, and we had a presenter there from California Ford, just giving us an update on their economic summit that's in October. It's gonna be over three days, and there'll be some breakout sessions, some events, you know, work group session, panel discussion, and a lot of youth engagement this year. So I'm looking forward to that. And one of the things I mentioned to him, you know, we, we just appointed a new commissioner, and we talked about what are the ways we can, what can we do to keep our local talent or bring our talent back once they go off to college? And I think that one of our big focuses always, you know, in the valley to do that. So that's one of the big reasons why youth engagement is important for this summit. I also had a Visit Greater Palm Springs Bureau meeting. And during that meeting, we had a, a presentation from Heather Violka from Lithorize, who did a presentation there. We also had a great budget presentation by Scott White. And that is it for my commissions. I also attended the Second Saturday events. Those are going great. The Food Truck Fridays are going great. We, we've been having those, so been attending those. Now let's get down to some of my serious stuff. We just celebrated 4th of July, and it's always a great holiday for us. And I thank the casinos for putting on the fireworks. And I know we've talked about doing fireworks here. We do have our local fireworks, where we have the nonprofits who reap the benefits of that. So I think that's great, and they've had great turnouts. But we had a lot of complaints, and not just complaints from constituents. I was out driving around, and there were a lot of illegal fireworks in our city. And it got pretty bad. And it's unmanageable for our police to be out there trying to capture all the bad actors, so to speak. And we could do better. Our city could do better. We know they're illegal, and not only are they illegal, they're dangerous, very dangerous. And I, I, I think we should really look at our amount of fines. I think that we're at $1,000 right now. And I, I'd like us to raise it to three. And, you know, the council has, you know, an opinion on that, you know, I'm welcome to that, too. But I think we need to really send a message that, you know, that we won't tolerate that.
And, and thank you, Councilmember, because I feel that as part of my report, Assistant Chief Tully was gonna give a little brief update on the activities of the 4th of July and the enforcement and so forth. So either now or when there's a window, I want to make sure I defer some time to him.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Council, I'm Assistant Chief Brian Tully. I'm sitting in for Chief Washburn, who's out on vacation at the moment. But I would like to give you an update on the fireworks 4th of July event that occurred just recently. The department went ahead and did a fireworks operation detail for four days, starting July 1st and ending on July 4th. We went ahead and upstaffed our, our personnel on each of those days, increasing to six officers and two code enforcement officers on July 4th. A number of activities that they took care of were over, on the total number of calls were 616 calls for the four-day period. There were six shot fired calls that they responded to. They responded to disturbance calls of 57 calls. Those disturbance calls included party calls, short-term rental disturbance calls, as well as regular disturbance calls. The fireworks calls, there were 102 fireworks calls in total, and we responded to all of those. We also assisted the fire department 28 times in that four-day period. As a result, one of the things we did is, well, we, we assisted with four fires in the four-day period. There was a fire, a palm tree fire at 44680 Jackson Street. We assisted with a house fire on Via Real Drive. We also assisted fire at a garbage enclosure located at Shadow Hills. And we also assisted cow fire on a vegetation fire off of the south end of Jackson Street. I have to say that the fireworks that occurred, whether they were legal and illegal, were incredible. And our response to it was everything we could, we could muster at that time. But quite frankly, our impact did little to alleviate the fireworks concerns and, and issues in our city. We did have a meeting. We met last week with our lieutenants and our sergeants who put on the operation. And we came up with a number of ideas on how to improve our response. But one of those is that if, if the fireworks are happening during the week, we have to put all our staffing on July 4th. Our, our staffing from July 1st to July 3rd were minimal calls, but July 4th was just a heavy, heavy load. We need to put additional officers, including our investigation staff, out there as well. And we basically have to put everybody on duty in order to, to make, I believe, a dent in, in what's going on out there. We had, we need to have additional staffing with our dispatchers and our professional staff, which includes code enforcement, just to assist in, in everything that's going on on July 4th. Our personnel have to be proactive in issuing citations. We often take our approach of gaining voluntary compliance, which our officers are great at doing. But it has little to do with, when you do voluntary compliance, the word doesn't spread quite as far as when you enforce it through citations. And quite frankly, we have to get the community's attention on the dangers of illegal fireworks in our community. The fire department was, was very, very busy. Like I said, they needed our assistance. And we will adjust our, our staffing and our, our response in the coming year to this, to this growing issue.
Did we give any, how many citations did we hand out?
Yeah, we had, we, we issued actual citations. We issued four. We did six documented warnings, and the rest were verbal warnings.
And Mayor, to Council, Councilmember Furman's question, many cities are moving to increasing the fines for fireworks. I think most have gone to $2,000 for the first violation, $3,000 for the second, and $5,000 for subsequent. We can absolutely research if there's a higher amount that the council wants to impose. The $1,000 limit, based on my recollection, was based on a Attorney General opinion from 2007 that was issued to Jim Penman, City Attorney in the City of San Bernardino. At the time, he had requested what the MAC, whether $1,000 was permissible. And the Attorney General said yes, in 2007, $1,000 was permissible. That didn't prohibit cities from going higher if they felt that they had the statutory authority to do so. But a lot of cities just went to $1,000 based on that opinion, because they felt they had adequate cover for it. So be happy to research with the police department about approving a modified fine schedule for violations of this ordinance and any other upgrade, other upgrades that we can do to make it easier to enforce.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you're gonna bring it back in a, in a proposal, then that's probably the time to discuss it, because I was gonna bring up the same issue. It's not from the first to the fourth. It's from the first to the 15th.
Yeah.
And it's not illegal fireworks. It's gunshots, it's shotguns, it's way out of control. And I wanted to have a conversation at the council level, because for many years, I've been asking chief to track this. Even if we were to issue four citations at $5,000, that's $20,000. We're paying $1 million for staffing during that period. I don't see why we continue to go down this path. And the nonprofits that we help and assist in allowing them to raise funds have other opportunities to raise funds that are not as detrimental or problematic to the community. And we certainly do our part as a city in supporting nonprofits by having community grants. So I really want to have this conversation about totally banning fireworks moving forward. It's, it's not worth it.
We can bring forward a comprehensive ordinance update that includes the fine schedule, but would also include whether you want to have an outright ban on sale. And you guys can have that policy-level discussion.
Well, unless I can make up the $1 million, I don't see why we would do it.
Can we actually get, get some kind of estimate of what it costs us to, for, for enforcement? Because I think if that's adding up to 10 times more than what the nonprofits are making, then we would save money by giving the money straight to the nonprofits, right?
We would. However, that staffing, even with the ban, would still have to happen. It would just be so much easier. Imagine some of these calls, calling up about fireworks in the neighborhood. Our officers are spending time to arrive. Those are safe and sane fireworks, making a huge noise. It's just, it's, it's very difficult to enforce when the doors open for those.
And, and to the city manager's point, this is an issue that is faced by communities all across the state. And it, it just, you really send mixed messages to your community when it's, here, you can buy these, also don't use them. So, yeah, it, it's, it's a challenge. And most people don't understand the distinction between safe and sane and other fire, dangerous fireworks, I think that's what they're called.
I, I think my issue is, is, you know, the nonprofits. But I think, you know, when I first got here 20 years ago, there was a big difference, and we didn't quite have this, this issue. And I think there was a, you know, it's, it's great that the nonprofits make a significant amount of dollars, but maybe there's another way to, to help them, other options. We have the grants. I think safe and sane is, is, is not exactly that. I think you're right, it sends the wrong message. That's right, it's not sane. It, it sends the wrong message, I would agree. So don't support, yeah.
Yeah. Let's bring it back.
So we'll bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I didn't know the chief was gonna have a report, so.
It was, it was bad. It was, yeah, it was so, so bad. It was bad this year.
You know, I was out driving around, and I, I seen some of it myself, so. And it's, you know, we could do better. We'll have that conversation when it arrives, you know? Because I know we might have some conflicted views on it. But valid points made and taken. Before I conclude, though, I, I do have a couple of requests for some, for some letters of support to go up to Sacramento to the Appropriations Committee on behalf of the city. One is a bipartisan Senate Bill 14, making human traffic a serious felony to the state, in the state of California. It was passed by the Public Safety Committee recently, thankfully. And now as that appropriations, I, I'd like to get a letter of support up to Sacramento and also to our local assembly member for that bill. And also, geez, where's my other bill at? I believe it's AB 335. And this bill will provide clarity on the impacts of businesses, including small businesses. And it gives lawmakers an opportunity to fairly open and address potential deficits in the enactment of Proposition 47. And what Proposition 47 is, it, it pertains to theft, and the amount that makes theft a felony right now is at $950. that makes theft a felony right now is at nine hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, before, it was, uh, approximately four hundred. And, uh, Proposition, uh, forty-seven, which was called, I believe, the Safe, School Safe Act, um, changed that. And, uh, this Assembly Bill three thirty-five is also with the Appropriations Committee, and I'd like a letter of support for that as well. Um, we had some conversation earlier, um, and I, I just see some of these things going on in our state, in our community, and it's not, uh, unique to the Bay Area, it's not unique to Los Angeles, it's traveling down here. And, uh, there needs to be accountability for theft and also for human trafficking. And I don't wanna see it in my community, and I want Sacramento to understand, uh, we don't wanna see it here in Indio and the Coachella Valley. So, uh, that would conclude my report. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Do you need any direction from us for that?
Uh, it sounds like those are consistent with the legislative platform, so we'll, we'll just send those.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only committee that I had that was active was Sunline Transit Agency. Uh, we hired a new CEO, Mona, uh, Labanto. Uh, she is coming in from, uh, San Francisco, she was on the Golden State Transit, uh, Agency. Uh, she'll be started on August seventh to take over the Sunline Transit Agency, and she's done an amazing job where she is, and she'll be a great asset to the, uh, Sunline Transit Agency. We had two, uh, budget items, both the, uh, taxi and the general budget were approved, both balanced budgets, and eight brand-new hydrogen cell buses, newest generation, are becoming as part of that budget too at the same time. So we'll be getting towards having a hundred percent zero emission buses by twenty thirty-five. And then lastly of it is, uh, we had a rotation of the, uh, chair position. I, after two years, I rotated off to be a member. Lisa Middleton is the new chair of the Sunline Transit Agency, and Denise Delgado from Coachella is the vice chair. Uh, just a couple other notes, we were all at the, most of us at C-VAG, General Assembly, uh, the successes of the Coachella Valley. C-VAG is a operation of all the governments, including the tribal governments, that work together on transportation, synchronization of signals and that. Uh, we had a great year, uh, here in the Coachella Valley, and it kinda highlighted it. Uh, the new chairman of, uh, the Executive Committee is Scott Mattis from Desert Hot Springs, so congratulations to him and everyone else. I was also at the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, the Business Awards. Um, a lot of great businesses, uh, thank you to, uh, all the members. We had a few of our, uh, local, uh, businesses here in the city of Indio, Desert Care Network, which is part of JFK Hospital, Fantasy Springs Casino, Buzz Box, uh, Pueblo Viejo, we're all honored for their work. And Rich Remhoff from, uh, Desert Care was the chairman, and now we have Andrew McDuff, who is taking over as chairman of the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, so congratulations to all of them. And then, uh, lastly was Leadership Coachella Valley. If you haven't been a part of it, it's a great organization run by the Chamber of Commerce in Palm Springs, but it's with all the Chamber of Comferences. It's a, uh, multiple-month program where you go and you learn about the Coachella Valley as a whole, and if you haven't s- uh, been to it, or had an opportunity, they take applications. But it really goes into the heart of the Coachella Valley, and what make it tick from farming to the legal system, to, uh, city government, to where all the assets that we have from casinos on down, and, and kinda gets behind the nuts and bolts of how they work together to make this valley what it is. And so, um, fifty-four graduates, a lot of them from the city of Indio, almost a third of them. So congratulations to all of them, and that's my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any pro temp?
Yep, everybody beat me to it.
Oh.
No committees?
Apologies.
Councilmember Furman, you had another, something to add?
Yeah, I have one more important item, um, uh, before the mayor goes, go ahead and starts.
You said you weren't gonna be talking.
I said I wasn't gonna talk, I'm sorry, but this is, uh, important because I know we all get a lot of calls about this, and we always talk about our community and beautification of our community, and, um, it pertains to our homeless community. And, um, I had a RCTC meeting, and, uh, this wasn't on the agenda, however, I brought it up because we do have a large, growing population of unseltered folks near our railroad tracks, and if you're coming toward our city, now you can see them. Now, we don't own that, we don't own these properties, and there has to be a collaborative effort with RCTC, Caltrans, and Union Pacific, uh, to keep our freeways clean, um, to keep our, our railroads not only clean, but safe. Um, it's a safety issue, and it's also a humane issue. How humane is it to have folks living in a hundred and twenty-two degree weather, uh, next to railroad tracks? So I have brought it up during our RCTC meeting, and our director and mayor, uh, was having a meeting the next day with Union Pacific, so she's gonna get back to me, uh, whatever efforts they have going on. And it goes back to a lot of the things we've said, uh, things are, we're growing and, and challenges are not u- unique to Los Angeles or the big metropolitan cities, we're growing in the Coachella Valley, and that's one of the things I think that we need to address, so.
Thank you. Great. Uh, this month I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee, and we discussed some topics of, uh, resilience to climate change. They mentioned that by June, we had already had nine events in the U.S. that caused over one billion dollars in damages each. Uh, some estimates show that investments in resilience can save up to six dollars in the future for every dollar spent now. Uh, FEMA also had a representative there talking about resilience and how FEMA is switching from being a responsive agency to more of a focus on prevention and mitigation. Uh, for future agenda items, I requested updates on emerging technologies, salt and sea negotiations, and impacts of the Colorado River negotiations on the, on the Southern California re- uh, region. I also attended the regional council meeting where it was announced that SCAG has received a one-point-two billion dollars for supply chain investments throughout the region. Uh, this week I, or last week I met with our water agency, and we discussed the draft chromium six levels coming from the state water board. Uh, the state is proposing to lower MCL levels from fifty to ten micrograms per liter. If that goes through, it will cost us about a hundred million dollars. Or if we lower, or, or if we were to lower it to twenty-five or to twenty, it would not cost us anything. And so I'll be planning a trip to Sacramento for a public, public hearing on this item, and I'll be requesting that we either make a less drastic change or provide funding for the cities who will be, be needing upgrades, uh, to their systems. I also assisted, uh, assisted C-VAG with their interviews for the new director for their Energy and Sustainability Department, and will be announcing that hire here very soon. Sumo Dogs had their grand opening today. I was there with Councilmember Miller in our chamber. This is a local resident who started at the Coachella Valley Music Festival, uh, selling hot dogs, and they've opened up fifteen locations. This is gonna be their sixteenth location here in Indio, and we're happy to have them here offering another family-friendly restaurant for our community. I also wanted to thank our staff for a great concert at Second Saturdays, we had some great local bands, uh, this month. I think our community really appreciates all of these outdoor family events in downtown. Uh, people have been asking for more family activities, and our staff and businesses and artists have been working, uh, hard together to make that happen for us here, so really appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Thanks. We'll move on to our next item, which is gonna be our consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any items? I have one. And mine's gonna be, let me see, I can't find it, the TCC grant, I believe it's nine-point-eleven. There we go, yes.
I was happy to hear that we're gonna be putting in an application, but I just wanted to make sure our community knows what we're doing going forward.
Of course, this is a very, very exciting, uh, grant opportunity. Uh, Tim Wassel, uh, Public Works Director for the city. Uh, so this is a grant that actually landed us almost five million dollars, uh, last cycle for Jackson Street, uh, for, for the improvements on Jackson Street. And, uh, this time around, uh, if, if you recall, actually, we went after a large TCC implementation grant for thirty-five million dollars. We were not successful in, uh, in getting that grant. This time around, this particular grant is actually for development, it's not for implementation. So that includes, it actually includes acquiring a piece of property, uh, if we desire to do so. And we've actually, uh, with the help of the city manager, we've identified a parcel in the Jewels community, approximately six-point-seven acres, that we're interested in, uh, purchasing, uh, contingent upon getting the grant, of course. And, uh, the rest of the money could be used for environmental, for engineering, and that will make that parcel ready, uh, for a developer to, uh, it will enable us to work with the developer to come in and build affordable, uh, or attainable housing. So really, really exciting. Uh, the grant can go up to, uh, five million dollars, we're applying for the full amount. Uh, the Jewel community is a community that qualifies, uh, for that grant, and we're crossing our fingers, and we're going after it. It's due August first.
All right.
So this resolution actually, or what it does is authorize this, the city manager or myself to, uh, to, uh, submit the grant and to enter into the agreement.
Okay. And, and then one question I had was, because it is for TCC, I know it has to do a lot with climate resilience and sustainability, so are we planning some of those additions to, for the future, right? If we were to get the land and develop it, would it include, you know, solar power, or what kind of things are we looking forward to?
Right, so, so it's, uh, some of the goals is actually, uh, expand economic opportunity and share prosperity. That's the focus of this particular one for, for acquiring the land. But of course, uh, the housing, uh, if, if we're successful, and we have a developer, then all of these items, including trees and solar and energy efficiency, all of these items will be considered.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar presented from nine-point-one to nine-point-one-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Furman. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion passes five-zero. Thank you. And we'll move on to item ten-point-one, ordinance number seventeen ninety-six, amending chapter thirty-two for city commissions, allowing community services commissioners to serve on the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission.
Um, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. This item is an ordinance amending, uh, two sections of, uh, the city commission's ordinance, uh, chapter thirty-two, sections thirty-two-point-oh-three and thirty-two-point-oh-four, um, allowing the community services commissioners to serve on the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. This is a voter-initiated commission, um, uh, to serve, um, to serve, um, as vacancies occur, um, in that commission. And also allowing the commissioners to waive, uh, the stipend that is set by the city, should they decide to do that. Um, I have the city attorney here, if you guys have any additional questions on the ordinance.
Is, is that a requirement that they waive the second stipend?
Stipend.
Is that a requirement that they waive the second stipend?
So, uh, it, it, uh, do you want, okay, um, the language of the ordinance as it currently states is that they shall accept the stipend. Um, and shall, and generally speaking, in our ordinances means mandatory. Uh, we, we do have some members of the commissions who wanna do this purely out of public service. They don't wanna be paid, they don't want the stipend. Um, and so, uh, we're interested in giving them that flexibility.
Okay.
But it would be their choice.
It would be their choice.
Gotcha.
But can we do that if this is a voter-initiated?
That, that's an excellent, uh, question, Councilmember, and we did research that. The language of the ordinance itself, and I can bring up the specific code section, give me one second.
Yeah, but the ordinance isn't what the voters pass, that's why.
No, I, I, I understand. So, when we're talking about voter initiatives, there are absolutely limitations on the ability of the city council to amend, um, tho- those sections. Uh, this particular ordinance, when you look at, uh, section ninety-nine-point-oh-seven, which, according to my research, was included in the original voter-approved, uh, version of the ordinance, says the chapter shall not be construed to prohibit or preempt the city council from enacting legislation supplementing the chapter whereby the enforcement, interpretation, or further regulation, and this is the important part, so long as the city council in no way diminishes any protection which this chapter affords to homeowners. And apparently the city council has afforded itself that ability to amend it because as far as I can tell, this ordinance has been amended seven times over the last thirty to forty years, since eighteen, or nineteen eighty-four. Um, so I guess we're coming up on forty years. Um, that's consistent, you know, I, I've had other communities, frankly, in the last six months. Um, one that the voter-approved Mobile Home Rent Commission didn't have the provision for alternates, and they were having difficulty where theirs had a tenant representative, you don't, but theirs did. And what happens when you get a rent and the tenant, their quorum required that the tenant representative, the owner representative, and a member of the public be present. Um, what happens when you have a rent application from that tenant's park, or from the owner representative's park? Uh, they're conflicted off. So, we had to add in language that allowed for alternates. The same exact research was done on that one, that one didn't have this explicit language, but we still found that that was permissible under state law. So long as you are not substantively modifying the effect of the ordinance, you can make change like this. In this case, the ordinance that we're changing isn't even the Mobile Home, uh, Commission's ordinance, we're changing a general ordinance that is generally applicable to all commissions, which prohibits sitting on more than one commission at a time. Having, uh, your Mobile Home Rent Commission have access to membership from others is actually a pretty common practice because communities all over the state are facing the same problem Indio is, which is, this particular commission meets infrequently. Um, you can't be involved in the mobile home park or be a tenant, so you'd find people who don't have a personal interest in this issue, but who are nevertheless willing to essentially be on call at a moment's notice to come in and, and hold a highly complicated hearing that requires a lot of training on. Uh, it's difficult to find this one, although, obviously, you've started to, you've had at least one tonight. So, uh, yes, our research indicates you'd be allowed to pass this.
So we're, our goal is to ultimately merge the two?
Uh, that's up to you, because if you adopt this, a community services commissioner could serve on mobile homes. So if there were a vacancy, which I think the mayor has right now, he would have an option to just ask his community services commissioner, would you like to also serve on? And then each of you, each time, could have that. So over time, perhaps it eventually does become all in the one, the same? Or it could continue to be two commission, but we'd have a commissioner perhaps sit on two.
But how does that address the no, no two commissions?
So, we've, we've created by this ordinance an exception only in the case of the Mobile Home Commission, which says that, in the case of that commission, you are allowed to sit on another commission, specifically the community services.
But then why would we waive the stipend if they have to attend another meeting?
No, they're just asking that if they don't want to accept it, they can not accept.
Two, two separate issues, uh, both being resolved.
Giving them the option, okay.
And if, if I made the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission ordinance under their administration, they do not get a stipend.
Oh, okay.
So.
Really?
Really.
They should.
We need to review.
No, we need to review all the segments and everything else, yeah, that's.
But why, why the community commission instead of any commission? Why, why did we pick that one?
It's, it's one that maybe has some, some relationship to it. But we are finding with that committee as well that the meetings are very brief at times, twenty, thirty minutes. Um, so the, there are members currently that are very interested in doing more, this would be one more thing they could do.
Okay.
Once a year, probably, because that's all it really meets.
Oh, I'm just figuring out, trying to figure out why we picked that one. If you were gonna do commissions, maybe the planning commissioner wants to do it another, that's the only reason I said that, is you want somebody else to be on another commission, you wanna waive it, then waive it where there can be on multiple ones.
Your call.
That's, that's how I look at it.
Should we, should we make it so that it's not just community services?
I think all the commissions should, if we wanna put somebody that's really qualified and they're, we happen to have them on the planning commission to go on something else, why not?
So, so, so the, it would be specific to mobile home, meaning the community service wouldn't be on planning, but planning commissioner, sustainability, uh, community services could serve on mobile home at your discretion.
Right, yeah.
That would be the amendment to the proposed draft, but would be fine.
I think so. I think that's best.
Yeah.
That way we have a, a bigger variety of individuals that might, and they all have different skill sets, so they might be really good on that.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
I'll, I'll need the city attorney to help with that one.
Just that sentence, we could add the other commissions.
Yes, I, I, I think that we can do a, a relatively simple amendment, uh, to, to the draft language, which would be that a commissioner may serve on no more than one commission, uh, at a time, except for the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. If they meet the requirements to serve on that commission, uh, they may, they may serve on another commission. Um, so I think we will take that language, we will incorporate it into this and bring it back for a second reading at a future time if you approve it tonight.
So we need to waive that with those amendments?
Yes, I think you, your direction would be to introduce, hold first reading as amended.
Is, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll, uh, make a motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number one-seven-nine-six, amending chapters, sections three-two-point-oh-three and three-two-point-oh-four. City Commissioners allowing Community Service Commissioners and all Commissioners to, uh, serve on the, uh, Mobile Home Fair Practice Commission, allow Commissioners to waive the stipend provided by the city pursuant to their, their appointment with the amended, uh, notation by our city attorney.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Holmes. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Move on, we'll move on to item ten-point-two.
That would be awesome, and I will leave the diocese to the fact that I have a financial interest, um, within. interest, um, within a thousand feet of this particular item, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. And ten point two is going to be Indio mural number fifteen, project finalist selection. Who's presenting, Brett?
I thought, um, I don't see if Leila's on Zoom, she, she is.
Can you hear me? I'm here.
Oh, we can see you, yep.
Do we have a presentation?
Yes.
Great, good evening, um, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Lena Navar, uh, public, uh, public arts analyst. This project before you is, um, item ten point two, which is Indio mural number fifteen, project final selection. The RFP for this project went out from March first to May first. It is located within the downtown area on Moyes Avenue, facing the under-construction, um, new Indio living room. We received twenty-two, twenty-six proposals, the budget was forty thousand dollars. The arts commission narrowed down to six proposals, and at their last, uh, meeting, they selected three finalists with no order or special ranking. The finalists, um, the first one is Frank Lemus. Um, his, um, mural is inspired by iconic Coachella Valley landscape, music, nature, and also he, um, is putting together this design, uh, with the hope to bring people together within this area. The second proposal is from John Cuevas. Um, he selected agave as the main, um, motif of this, uh, project. Uh, the black area is his, um, inspiration from agave. He also has a bird, which is inspired from the United Farm workers. The third, uh, proposal is by a team of, um, artists, Mari Navarro and Carlos Ramirez, but they are proposing, it has a main humanistic figure, uh, which is also inspired by the desert landscape, the mountains, and it has the Native American motifs that we see within our, uh, region. Um, with that, um, staff is, um, recommend, staff would like to know if the council is ready to select a finalist from, uh, these three options, and authorize the city, um, attorney and city manager to negotiate and finalize the term of, uh, contract for a total amount of forty thousand dollars. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Navar. Do you have any questions?
Did the arts commission, um, get the input of the business owners in the area to see what they would like to see?
Uh, the, the, the business owners, no, but we, um, the staff had, um, sent an email with all the twenty-six proposals to the, uh, restaurant that the wall is the east-facing wall of the restaurant. Uh, we did not receive any comments from the, um, restaurant tenants at the time, but recently we have received, uh, after the staff report went out, we have received some, um, input from, um, the, um, tenants of that restaurant.
And what was their input?
Their input was, uh, one of the owners said, um, they are, um, okay with number two, uh, I'm sorry, they are okay with number two, which is here, but they prefer, uh, one of the other proposals that was amongst the twenty-sixth.
Which one?
Uh, it was number six. If you would like to see, I can pull that up as well.
We could.
All right, I'll pull that up, uh, just.
Yeah.
But I know I'm looking at the staff report.
It is from, uh, Mr. Valentine.
Oh, okay, it's the dark black one?
Yes, the dark black one.
Dark black one with, like, it looks neon, but it's not.
It is not neon, but it, it's, um, it, the black and the paint that he uses, it will, um, generate the effect that you see on the screen. You can see that, number six?
Did you, did you find it, Leila?
Yes.
We found it.
If you could share that, or if Matt can share that.
I'm sharing it, you don't see it?
No.
No, we're still on the number.
Okay, let, let me redo it again then, sorry about that. Sorry about that, can you see it now?
Yes.
All right, so this is the one that the property owner preferred, uh, preferred one among the twenty-six, but he also said, uh, the, the, um, design from Juan Cuevas, number two, was okay with him as well.
I like number two, I think it fits more of the modern style, and then also goes well with the other, the mural across the street, with the mountains, and with the cacti, like, has similar color schemes. I, I just think it goes well with the, with that neighborhood there.
Which one was number two?
Number two.
Agave, the triangles.
Who wants to go next?
I, I mean, I, I like the idea of number six, this, I like the idea that, of the Indio in it, but, uh, I, I think the, uh, number six looks great. I, I do also like number two, I think the colors on it stand out, but we have one of our art commissioners here, we have Alex Sanchez, if she wants to kind of give an idea of what maybe went on.
It was her first meeting.
Hey?
I, I think the one thing.
I, I, but they're not recommending number two, I mean, they're.
They're recommending number two.
Are, are they recommending?
They're saying one of those three.
Oh, one or, oh, I thought they were doing the first one first.
No.
Oh, okay.
They're, they narrowed it down to three, they want us to pick the final.
Oh, okay.
Shall I go?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right, well, thank you, Leila, for, for the presentation and all the, the hard work that's gone into this, and thank you to the artists, um, and, and this is with all due respect, um, for me, for that location, um, I don't like any of them, I'm just going to be honest. We have an amphitheater going in right there, um, our museum is down the street, if we want to, we're going to do some cultural, I prefer it be at a different location, they're nice, beautiful pieces, but I prefer the ones that didn't make it, which was like eleven, twenty-two, and twenty, I did like number six with the car and the I-ten, uh, sign, but, uh, twenty-three pays homage to Coachella Fest, um, it has a train, which we are the city that was, you know, founded by our railroad, and our railroad and, uh, multimoto hub is, uh, slated to go across the street. Um, I, I just, you know, and I, I just have to be honest too, is that sometimes artwork grows on me, sometimes I might not like it today, and once it gets up and it's nice and beautiful, it grew on me and I like it, but I just think something more, uh, modern, pop culture that pertains to music and the festivals in this area and entertainment, um, I think is more suitable, and I also think more input by the tenants that are going in there. Um, I think we need to have more input from them as well, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm not an artist, but I'm just being honest with these three pieces.
That's fine.
I'm kind of surprised, after hearing the arts commission say that they wanted input from the people around the area, that they didn't get that. Could we ask them to at least have that conversation with the businesses, to see what they would, what their input is?
Certainly, there was an email sent, but they might have a backlog of emails, um, but we did follow up and eventually got the input that, that we now have.
Two or six.
If, if we were to go back, we could sit down and maybe, another idea, I'm just interjecting here, if, if perhaps Mr. Cuevas, for example, you kind of like his style, we could send Mr. Cuevas to, to meet with the tenants, and they could come up with some concepts to bring back, so you could almost kind of select an artist, but not a mural, uh, it's just an option to consider. You could also, we could also contact the tenants and say, listen, we have a budget, and we are up to the final approval, but if you'd like an artist and some mural concepts, you know, work within the budget we have, but come back with some ideas. There is a little bit of a time crunch here, these take time to develop and install, and if we want it to be in place about the time they open, we'll have to get on our horse, so it just has to go quickly, uh, probably within the next couple of weeks, frankly, to get it done in time.
So what are you thinking, Raymond? What's your thought?
I.
You, you stopped on us, so.
No, I, I.
You just don't like any of them, you want to go back to drawboard?
I, I don't want to go back to drawboard, I like some of the ones that didn't get, make the, the final cut.
Shall we scroll, shall we scroll through those? Leila, can you?
Well, I don't know that we'll come to consensus tonight.
Probably won't, because, I mean, I don't want to overrule the art commission as well.
But also the owner.
Yeah, the owner needs to input.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have the owner input, but, you know, whatever the vote is going to be, the vote's going to be.
So why don't we just ask the arts commission to please reach out, and really reach out and talk to them? I'm not sure who else is, like, is Gabino and.
So, do we pick an artist then? Or do we just let it go back and let it start over?
Let's just see what they propose, let's just see what the, the neighbors propose. Let's just leave it blank, we don't have to say anything.
Or, or we give?
We already approved the budget.
Owners, uh, opportunity to tell them within the budget what they want to do? I mean, there's got to be some direction, are we just going to tell them back and do it?
Are they going to find an artist, are they going to come back with concepts?
I just want to know what they would like, what, what the owners would like, you know, whatever that is, I don't know.
The one conversation, uh, that I did have relating to the I-ten sign is they felt like something that somebody would want to stand, a comment you made earlier, Mayor Protem, someone would stand and take a picture in front of. And the I-ten, that's one reason why that one grabbed them, and you can see that, that makes sense, you want it to be a draw. Uh, that's the only input I recall, um, and the colors, so I, I think if we go back to them, we'd like to give them a little bit of direction, are they finding an artist? Are they coming back with concepts? If they're just going to give us some general ideas, we're going to be back where we started, get to these twenty-six artists, give them more direction, it's probably.
Well, I would ask the ar- area business owners, what do they want to do, and leave it open like that, not necessarily having to pick one of these artists, just ask them. I mean, some of the business owners put in their own art, have, where they asked if they want to put in their own art.
If you direct us, we could do that, that was the idea, that, um, they would come back with their own rendering, and propose it to the arts commission and to you, to see if you liked it. But I think we'll be back where we're starting, if we leave it a little too general, back to the Councilmember Miller's point, they can give us some ideas, then we're going to have to create a new RFP with those ideas, send it out to the artists, we're probably sixty days out. Not that we have to rush it, but I think there'd be some wisdom in having it done about the time everything's happening down there. This is the one that they preferred of all, um, but I think we need to give them some more parameters. I don't mind the idea, and I'm speaking over Leila here, that if they have an artist in mind, then have them draw up your ideas, and they can get with the Gabinos and others, and bring it back, but we need it done in a couple of weeks.
Well, if they can do that, or if not, just come to consensus on something.
On this list? If we ask them today, they would say this one on the screen.
I would, I would say you're probably, that one, or, or the number, number two, yeah, I would say that you're probably right, but they're all unique in their own way. I hate to override the, the.
It's, it's not an.
Public art commission, I mean, they continue to bring us projects, and we continue to send them back, either we, we discussed this earlier, either we got to communicate with them better on what we're looking for, or, or we got to pull back until we decide what we want to do.
Yeah, I, I just think the idea is that they're an advisory board, and I think they did an excellent job in saying, here are three we like, we recommend you pick one of these three. But maybe a deference to Councilmember Furman, just to take a few minutes, Leila, what numbers again did you refer to, to see if they are grabbing any? Because we could show these again to the tenants, twenty-six, was it?
Um, eight, twenty-two, and twenty-three, and this was six, right?
Oh, um.
Eight?
This is twenty-two.
This is six.
Oh, eight?
Yeah.
So, this, I'm sorry, this is eight?
Can we get them on our screen too here? Because.
Oh, you don't see it?
Matt? We see it on your screen.
There we go.
Oh, I see.
There we go, you were good.
That's eight?
I don't like.
So this is eight?
One of those three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like that one, it's too busy.
Twenty-two?
I'm going to twenty-two real quick, sorry.
I like fifteen, yeah.
We're not going to come to consensus tonight.
I think fifteen was nice.
Okay, well then, then, then direct us, which, is it an artist, is it some detail?
Either one, either they propose an artist, or they pick something of these twenty-six, and let us know what they like, I'd like to get some input from the people in the area. They're the ones that are going to see it every day.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, well, I mean, if the, I think if the arts commission picked the six to, to begin with.
Three.
Well, they picked six first though, right? So one through six, were those the same numbers?
No, no, they were not.
No.
No, they were not one through six, they chose six, uh, which is, um, a mix from what you see here, and from the six, one, uh, dropped, and one didn't show up to the commission, so there were four, which the three that you saw previously in my presentation, plus number six, those four artists presented to them, and after them presenting, they considered everything, including the roughness of the wall, and then they picked this one, uh, which could, um, the finished work will be more suitable for that rough wall, uh, as opposed to something with more fine details. Um, so, um, number six was also before them for their, their commission's review as well.
We're not going to come to consensus.
For, for number two, would you foresee any issues with those details? Can we go back to two?
So twenty-three.
It's eight.
My lord.
You chose two on the, on this one?
Decide what we want to do and send it back.
I don't think we can.
Because we're not going to get consensus here.
That's twenty-three.
That's cool.
So this is twenty-three.
But she says the wa- the wall's too rough. She says the wall's too rough for detail.
The wall is rough, there, there was a decision made to keep the wall as is, um, there is another option that, uh, the city or the public arts fund needs to pay, uh, about ten to fifteen thousand dollars to, um, make that wall more, um, suitable for a fine work, uh, such as this one, uh, that's, that's another option as well.
That's why I'm not the artist.
Help.
I, I would say, I say we, we send it back, have them talk to the business owner, come back with three of them that we like, and then, oh, here comes Alex.
Alex, you understand.
She's, she's coming up.
Don't let us do this.
I just wanted to make a suggestion, um, obviously not tonight, because there's quite a few, and, um, even some of these proposals have several different options. Um, I'd like to suggest that maybe you go through and pick your top three, so that we know from your end what you like, um, and then also, so we can go back to, um, the owner or the tenants of the building, and kind of figure out overall, between council and the tenant, and the arts commission, what would be like the top, and then obviously, um, you have the, the vote on this.
Where, where were you guys on number six, the one with the, like, neon colors on it?
The black one?
Um, from our last meeting, I believe only one commissioner chose the, uh, yes.
The one with the, the I-ten sign?
Yes.
And then what about number two?
Number two was popular.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, we had the study session today, and it goes back to exactly what we're doing right now, community involvement, talking to the tenants, and then coming back and getting the, uh, you know, consensus, so I, I think her suggestion is fine.
Yeah, I think it's good.
I, I don't want to be involved in the process, so don't ask me for top three.
Okay.
I, I'd say you go back and, and kind of gave them direction to where we're going to go.
But, I mean, they're going to go to the owners, the owner's going to say we like two and six.
So then we got to step between two and six?
That's pretty much it.
That's what I'm saying.
We, we, that was outreach.
They could say they have their own artists.
Just remember that we're about a month, we're a month away till our next meeting, so, but we can do that, we can bring this back to the next meeting with owner input, uh, they may probably just pick the one that we, we know they're going to pick. If they want to come up with an artist, they need to know it's probably, uh, another sixty days just to go through the process, so.
Well, let's see what they say.
I'm good with two or six.
I'm good with two or six.
Depends what you guys want to do.
So, to Alex's suggestion, if, if the majority of you are fine with two or six, we could ask them.
Wait, he's not.
He's not, well, you don't have a majority.
Well, we got to vote on this, right?
I, I think we're looking for a motion then. I think we're looking.
It is a motion, but we're not voting because we can't have consensus here.
Well, there are four of you, so I think we'll just need three of you to tell us what to do.
Well, there's only two willing to tell you what to do.
Then let's not put a mural up.
That's, I said, I don't want to be put in that position.
I do, I do think that the suggestion at the very end, that there were some concerns that if we knock out that mortar, the rough mortar, that there's going to be other damage done. And so we have this $15,000 bid, but then we have to go in and repoint. So I think we need to work with what we've got there. And so let's keep that in mind. But this, this idea of talking to them one last time and to make sure that they're fine with two or six, because it sounds like the majority of you are fine with two or six, then it's just bringing it back to the next council. In fact, or if you can give us the direction. If they are fine with either two or six, and the majority of you are fine with two or six, we're just going to go get the thing done.
And the artists are aware of the texture of the wall, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you see any issues with number two and the details in number two with that wall?
Can you pull that up, Leila, number two?
I, I think Leila would probably have the best answer for that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any issue with number two because the artist also has experience with working with the rough walls. And then he also said what he specifically chose, these colors overlap on each other. So where there is a bump, it just creates a shadow. So at any point of the day, you may see a slightly different image due to those shadows. So he extensively talked about the roughness of the wall and he can't handle it. He said he's going to chisel the ones that will fall. But then he keeps the ones that they're in a, you know, they're hard on the wall, so there won't be a problem.
And they didn't have a concern with that wall being the one that hits, gets hit by the rising sun the most, gets the most heat?
So nowadays, they're better anti-UV and anti-graffiti coating. And that will be applied. And then since you have full-time staff, one of the plans that we have is to do a year maintenance on all our collections. So there will be, comes before you in the near future, maintenance plan for all our murals and all our sculptures. So with that in mind, we can protect this longer than the other murals that we have to remove.
Alex, do you know if there's an artistic interpretation to those funny green worm-looking things? Number nines?
Can you pull that up, Leila?
It's what's up on the screen.
Those are.
Top, right big worm.
Those funny green worm things.
They look like nines, but they're circles.
They're, they're tubes.
Two circles and a big circle.
Two circles on the side, yeah.
Um, no, I don't know if that's a.
I'm just wondering what the significance of that is.
So I think it's inspiration from the plant agave. So it's the color of that. So he tries to basically bring those colors into the work as well. So it's not number, but it's just an inspiration from the plants and the color of the plants.
Like it looks like a telephone?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That. I'm asking, what's the artistic interpretation of that?
I think he's just kind of blending the colors together. And it, to me, it looks like circular shapes, but I.
It's probably contrast.
I don't want to speak for him.
Contrast with the triangles and stuff.
Circles and triangles? Geom, geometry?
Yep. I think, I'm okay with letting the owner choose between two and six if we go back.
Two and six are two.
Two and six, yeah.
The black one and this one?
I think.
Yeah, I think letting the owner go two and six and then letting the city manager go ahead and get it done once he makes his issue.
So then there is a motion, whoever wants to make this.
I'll make the motion to select the finalists out of the three options to recommend to the, recommended by the Public Art Commission to paint Indio mural either number two or number six after discussing with the tenant of the building that is adjacent to where the mural is going to be and authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate and finalize, and finalize the terms of any agreement between the city and the selected artist for the total amount of $40,000. That's a mouthful.
Second? Second?
Second too?
I'll second.
I'll second it. I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Furman. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes 3-1.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Leila. And move on to item 10.3, which is authorizing the preparation and submittal of an application for participation in the state's pro housing designation program. And we have Mr. Azus Gomez. Oh, sorry, Mr. Kevin Snyder.
Mr. Wassel is just grabbing Councilmember Azius.
Oh, there you go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. No, I'm not Azius. Actually, Azius is here, but the city manager and I were having a discussion in recognition that it's been some time since we talked about pro housing. Well, we had anticipated asking for you to take potential action this evening. We actually wanted to pull back for a minute and talk a little bit about pro housing. Make sure that you have had the opportunity to get all your questions answered, any concerns expressed, any additional information, information needs relayed to the staff. So that before you take any action, whether it be this evening or in the future, you have all the information you need to, in your consideration. As a reminder, this effort is actually phase two of the city's housing element update. We received a state grant in the, in about $300,000, the amount of $300,000. And as part of that, we had a two-phase approach. The first was to do the housing element update, which the council ultimately approved, and we were certified in April 2022. The second part was to look at this pro housing designation. The pro housing designation is a designation from the state Housing and Community Development Department. And basically what it does is identifies those jurisdictions that are going to go basically some extra steps in addressing housing. Now, there are only 27 jurisdictions in the state of California that have this designation out of 482 jurisdictions. So not a lot. And actually, there's only one other municipality in the Riverside County, which is the city of Riverside, that has this designation. But it, it, it is a designation that provides opportunities. Obviously, it can help the city further explore and implement important policies around the issue of housing. That is certainly an important consideration. But there's also a strategic consideration because the pro housing designation is being recognized more and more by state granting agencies as a additional scoring opportunity. So for example, our public works director talked about the TCC grant earlier. Well, if we had a pro housing designation, when that grant goes in and they're deciding between us and other grant, potential grant recipients, having that pro housing designation could get us additional points. That might make the difference in getting the $5 million that Mr. Wassel talked about. So that's an example of the strategic advantage. The state has also set up a fund. It was funded in the amount of $26 million for a pilot implementation program for pro housing. 18 of those 27 jurisdictions got funding in this budget cycle. It's population-based, so the city of India would have been eligible for $500,000 in funding. And that could be used for a variety of purposes to assist the city in either producing affordable housing or assisting in programs that support housing, housing affordability and/or homelessness. So that is another opportunity for pro housing. But again, this evening, rather than asking you to take action, we really wanted to make sure that you had your questions out, that we knew exactly what, any, any concerns you might have. And then if there's additional information needs, that we take notes and we come back to you at a later date when, with that information. So with that, we're happy to hear any of your thoughts and I don't know if the city manager has anything else he wants to add?
Yeah, one of the things that I want to be clear of when we have the presentation is, I, I was reading through the policies and some of them we already have in motion, right? There's, there are things that we already have planned out. So I think when we do have that presentation, differentiating from what is it that we already have planned and what is it that we're taking on additionally, so that we can then compare, you know, what, what extra are we doing for these grant opportunities, right? I think another thing that I would like to see is, and I, I'm not sure if this is even possible, but seeing potential funding that could be awarded, right? So seeing, would there be funding opportunities that we get priority for, for the bridges? For TCC, TC's 35 million, right? For the bridges, because I saw there's a list of six different grants already that are in the list, right? And some is infill infrastructure. That could be the bridge, right? So what, what funding do those different opportunities, kind of maybe just hypothetical? If we could have some of those? And I think that's all I have for now. Any other questions?
Oh, my questions mostly were around the financing mechanisms. What would be the ideal amount that we would hope to be able to raise, whatever way we do raise, on an annual basis, Mr. Snyder? If it is that we qualify for $500,000 based on population, would it be your goal that we too would be able to come to the table with the matching amount?
That's a, that's a really great question. So one potential program that was in there is the creation of a local housing trust fund. We, the city has a low mod housing fund that you, you're aware of and that you've utilized funds for, for other programs. There is money available in that, that for example, this pilot program implementation money, that $500,000, we can actually use that to couple with the city's money to create, rather than a program with a couple hundred thousand dollars and it could be a program with substantially more, maybe closer to a million dollars in it, that we could then turn around to leverage housing, affordable housing investments in our community. So, you know, obviously the issue of housing and affordable housing in our community and, and the budgetary considerations, rather, that use of general fund dollars is important to the council and, and you want to make wise use of that. This is an example, that, that money that I just talked about of where we can leverage dollars that we may make a small investment into a higher investment. In terms of what the city should strive for, I really think it comes down to what the council's priorities are. And obviously, the use of general fund dollars is, is, you have a lot of other priorities. And so we have to balance that. This gives us the opportunity, I think, for lack of a better word, to go more successfully after other people's money, if you will, particularly in the state granting arena that the mayor referenced. We, we might, it might be that, for example, five additional points might make the difference of whether or not we get that TCC grant if we had that pro housing designation. And that might mean a lot to us in, in the short term and the long term. One thing I would mention is, in the plan, there is talk of use of general fund dollars. We did some more research and basically what we've come to understand is that we don't necessarily have to commit to use of those general fund dollars in our, in our application for pro housing. It certainly makes us look a little bit better. But what we found in researching the other jurisdictions, many jurisdictions didn't commit to the use of those dollars. They committed to the program idea. And then as the program ideas came along, there was a council decision in each, or, or a board of supervisors decision in each of those instances as to how they wanted to prioritize use of general funds at what level. So there is no fine, exact financial commitment in going after the pro housing.
Okay, so you don't have an amount. And I was going to make sure you knew I was not supportive of the general fund commitment. But Mr. Rob?
Rockwell.
Rockwell, how much do we make on TOT now? Every year, average?
Well, we had a very unaverage year last year. And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I'm sure it was somewhere around, I'm going to say 14 million, if that sounds about right. And historically before that, we were under 10. So what the future holds is a little gray.
That's okay. So just again, background historical stuff. 15 years ago, we brought it to SEVAG for them to come up with a regional housing trust for this exact same reason. And SEVAG did establish the Coachella Valley Regional Housing Trust. It is an official board. I happen to sit on it. They funded us with $25,000 back then. We did conduct some studies. The challenge was always, we never could figure out the funding mechanism. And we did a substantial study that was countywide because what we ended up honing in on, after all of the surveys that we conducted with the various stakeholders, was that really the only thing that, or additional pot of money that they were receptive to was what they considered a transfer tax, which means every time a property transfers residential or commercial from one property owner to another owner, just like right now the county charges $18 per transfer, we would add a transfer tax. Because the nexus would be that because that property sold, there's increased value and that would support affordable housing. So we have already gone through this whole process 15 years ago. When we took it to the Board of Supervisors, of course, back then, there was really no way to get consensus countywide on a tax. So we left it to the individual cities to decide if they wanted to do it for themselves. Really, the goal of the Coachella Valley Housing Trust was to address homelessness and transitional and the really, really, really low, low housing needs. But we had at the table, and they still serve on the board, the largest employers in the Coachella Valley because they wanted to find workforce housing. So I'm just letting you know what we've already done regionally, countywide. And the consensus that we came to, we just never could figure out how to get that, that financing mechanism approved countywide. It would be too hard of an uphill battle countywide. So we left it independently to the cities to decide. So I'm not really opposed to a transfer tax. I'd like to kind of hear more about that. If the council would feel that there's a nexus between, you know, when property exchanges hands and there could be exemptions if it exchanged between parent and child or something like that. But if there is an increase in sales, then that little additional transfer tax may fund a housing program. So I wanted to talk more about money than substance of your program. I did read it, so I look forward to seeing your presentation.
I appreciate that. And just to draw some experience in, in another community in Washington State, there they called a real estate excite, real estate excise tax. And that money was utilized for the purpose you said, and it was actually authorized by the state, but each local government had the authority to implement or not. So we could certainly do some more research on that. I also want to remind the council, you did do an innovative approach to funding affordable housing programs. When you approved the development agreement with the Bravo Collection, you included a 1% on gross receipts for each house within that project, which there's 16 houses. So that was a, an innovative way to, to, to make some money. We don't know exactly how much because that's based on the performance of those individual rentals. But it is a, another innovative opportunity to bring money to the table, limiting the use of general funds.
Yeah, and I will share with you another transfer tax that I've had a personal experience with. This man is a billionaire now because he built most of the country club communities in the Coachella Valley. He implemented a transfer tax of $1,000 on every home, every time it transfers. Every time it transfers in one of his communities.
Bilbo?
Bilbo. So, you know, there's the spectrum, $18, $1,000, but it's doable.
Okay.
Kevin, so with this helping us, are you saying that if we help with this pro designation that we could get grant, points towards other grants that could lead to substantial dollars in certain ways? And how feasible is that considering of the 26 jurisdictions, you said 18 got money? And $500,000 seems like a lot of money, but it depends on how much money you have to put into it.
Sure.
And I'm still waiting for the state of California to give us our $6 million from our redevelopment agency fund. So when the state of California wants to get serious about housing, maybe they can start with giving us the $6 million they owed us so we can put it into a fund to build affordable housing? So that's, that's where I stand on this one because they continue to support programs that end up costing the city more money. And, and I'm, I'm all for affordable housing. I'm all for in a proper places. Like the one we got on Highway 111 and Jefferson is, is so close to the road, it's a disaster. If they want to help us, give us our $6 million first, let us work with some other agencies and put it in a proper place that's near transportation, that's near businesses, so we can help the people in need and work with our Fantasy Springs and our different organizations that have large workforce populations. But until the governor wants to give us something, throwing us out these crumbs are going to end up costing us more money. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, um, Mayor, please.
Oh, no, I was, I was just thinking, you know, that's one pot of money, $500,000, but then you have another pot that's 35 million.
If we, if we get it, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
If we did the destination, and we were talking about housing, but they voted before you were on the council, $6 million. That's our money that they never even discussed with us.
But look at the numbers in the presentation.
I understand that.
And, and right now, 22% of the residents in Indio can't afford to buy a home in Indio.
This is very true.
And this is because of our past practices. We made above moderate income housing for a decade.
It's with the market bears.
Yeah, we don't decide that.
Well, we also built them across the freeway and didn't fund those bridges through that implementation, right? So now we're paying for those bridges because we didn't put that on those homes. And we also incentivized the building of those homes.
Past practices, what we could go back and couch quarterback for councils way before. We had the right of way to take all the way to Washington Street, all of La Quinta. We didn't take it. It doesn't mean it would do it.
I'm saying, we've created a big problem.
Everybody has a big problem.
And this is the way to address it, but also give us the opportunity for millions of dollars while we're addressing it.
Opportunity. And with that comes risk too. I mean, we'll see how it goes. I, I'm not, I'm all for four miles. I have no problem doing it if we fund it the right way. And it's put in the proper places where it's, it's an asset to the community and not an eyesore or lowers property values for other people. It needs to be strategically done. And right now, the state of California is force-feeding us. And they're saying if you put this money into this account, they're not guaranteeing you money. Yes, there is 35. you money, yes, there is 35 million, but, you know, we're fighting against the LAs, we're fighting against the other larger cities that have the votes on the legislators that continue, just like Chromium Six, continue to support the larger areas, why it force-feeds us more expenses that our residents have to bear. So, I do agree with you, but there needs to be some fine print into where it goes, but I do agree with you.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking to see, you know, what is it that we're actually taking on extra than what we're already planning on?
And are we willing?
And seeing if it's worth that risk.
But are we willing to give money out of our general fund for it?
We don't need to, he just.
But he says the possibility, but I mean, he says it looks good to do if we're doing it.
If I could clarify just a couple of points. One, the benefit, for example, Mr. Wassle's gonna apply for that TCC grant, simply checking the box of having a pro housing designation could mean the difference in whether we get that $5 million or not. It's as simple as that. If we don't have it, it means we're more competitive than if we do have it, but it's as simple as that. The issue of, there is, basically with pro housing, there is an expectation that we're going to do what we say we're gonna do in the application, correct? But it doesn't mean that we have to spend a lot of money doing it. As the mayor pointed out, we have 37 implementation actions in our housing element, we're doing a lot of those already, and a lot of those are administrative level. There are a couple that may involve money, the housing trust fund as an example, if the council want to dedicate resources there, but that would be, for example, the low mod housing fund, which is a reserved fund, and then the possibility of taking that $500,000 and coupling it. So, at the end of the day, council has the absolute discretion to determine how much money you want to spend. The value that staff sees in it is really what I said earlier, that strategic advantage. Obviously, there's a whole separate question about the provision of housing, but for the city to be competitive in a very, and Mr. Wassle can be much more detailed than I am, but a very competitive grant environment that we operate in every day, sometimes it can mean the difference between getting the grant and not getting the grant. And from my vantage point only, I think that's one of the main selling points of this designation, but certainly at the end of the day, the council has to feel comfortable with it, and we as staff understand that your expectations is that you are going to ultimately decide how the general fund monies are used, if they are used at all.
But, my point, what you say, and it's proven, is you're talking about checking a box, and we might not have to do it. That shows you how messed up the system is, when you're talking about, we check a box, we can get millions of dollars with this stuff, but we might not have to follow through with what we say we're gonna do, based on city council's discretion. So, I agree with what you're saying, but that means we're checking a box, because the state of California wants us to get this designation, and that's how I look at it. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna, yeah, exactly, but if we're gonna do affordable housing, let's do affordable housing. If this helps us get to our goal where it makes it, but if it's checking a box for the sake of checking a box, the state of California, I don't want anything to do with unless they're gonna help us, support us in real meaningful ways, and that's helping us by supporting the actual housing in a meaningful way.
And I want to clarify, the expectation is that if we submit and we tell that the state, we're gonna do things, we're gonna do them, but this is also about local control, and ultimately, the council makes the decisions about how and when you want to support programs financially, so that was my point, I want to make sure that was clear. I'm not saying that we just, you know, we're willy-nilly about it, what I'm saying is that there's strategic advantage, at the end of the day, the council is, you are, you are the elected leaders of the city, and it's important that ultimately, you feel comfortable with whatever programs are put in front of you for budgetary application. So, that's all I was saying, I hope, I don't want to leave the council or many members of the public meaning, with the understanding or the impression that this is meaningless, it's important, but it's ultimately the council's decision.
Right, thank you.
Any other comments on this side? Good.
Okay.
Any public comments, Sabby?
We have none, mayor.
Okay.
So, I think I have some notes here of what you're looking for, mayor and council, we will bring this back with more, I'm sorry.
One more.
Okay.
Well, because I know that there's a concern for the general fund, if there's other options that can give us the same points, that we're not initially in that plan, but that might be able to be replaced, to make sure that we have a strong application, also, please include those in the presentation when it comes.
Will do. Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. All right, we'll move on to item 10.4, approval of the bylaws for the Indio Electric Finance Authority. And we have Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, mayor. As you recall, on June 21st, the Indio Electric Finance Authority was formed, this is an entity, a joint powers agreement between the City of Indio and the Imperial Irrigation District that provides electric services here to us. There are a couple of steps that need to be taken as we implement the JPA, the IEFA, which is a joint powers agreement, as I stated. I would like to introduce Brian Forbath. Brian's the attorney from Straddling Law, that's been a part of our excellent consultancy team moving this forward. He can provide a little more detail, but essentially, what is before you with this item are the bylaws, and then 10.5 relates for part of the implementation to address the infrastructure needs. So, Mr. Forbath, if you'd like to give a little more meat to the bones, and then be available for any questions.
Great, thanks, Brian. Brian Forbath, very nice to be here with you this afternoon. The city manager did an excellent job describing what's before you tonight, this is the first sort of meeting of the, what we call the IEFA, and so there's just, the first action here is just some technical sort of matters related to the initial meeting, the adoption of the bylaws, which establishes the officers of the IEFA, with the mayor being the chair, the mayor pro tem being the vice chair, the city manager being the executive director, the city attorneys appointed the general counsel, and the assistant city manager, finance director, is the treasurer of the IEFA. Also, by approving the bylaws, you're approving the city's conflict of interest code that will apply to all matters related to the IEFA, and also, the city's investment policy will be, is approved as part of the bylaws. So, it's just sort of wraps in and becomes very similar to the city's existing public financing authority that you used in connection with the lease revenue bonds. And so, this action here tonight is sort of just, this first action is really just ministerial matters to sort of set the stage for future actions by the IEFA. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So, the bylaws are there for you to address those matters, and we recommend approval.
Any questions?
And you're just gonna operate this like all the other twins of us, we're just gonna have joint meetings.
That is exactly right.
Finance authority and all that.
No more meetings, no more meeting dates.
It's all combined here, in fact, Mr. Forbath referred to the existing finance authorities, it's exactly the same, you're right.
Just one big happy family.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
All right, let's see, by motion, as the board of the Indio Electric Finance Authority, IEFA, approve the bylaws for the IEFA and adopt the city's conflict of interest code, adopt the city's investment policy, and appoint the city attorney as IEFA general counsel.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion for council member Holmes, and a second from council member Miller, let's go ahead and vote.
It was unanimous.
All right, motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, Mr. Attorney, oh, there you are.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we'll move on to item 10.5, resolution number 2023-01 of the Indio Electric Finance Authority establishing and authorizing the charge, surcharge for electric service within the boundaries of the city of Indio, and we have Mr. Montgomery.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, you're now formed as the IEFA, the board members are set, the officers and so forth. The specific intent of forming the entity, both IED and the City of Indio, is to address some very specific and pressing infrastructure needs, and we've long discussed that, as you're well aware, but for those listening in, and so to address those, the entity would create a surcharge and a source of revenue to then address these needs, and these are specific to the overall redundancy, reliability, the effectiveness of the overall infrastructure. We know that our rates with IED are very, very low, and while that's a good thing in so many respects, it has not provided the resources to address these infrastructure needs, and it's critical for all of us here. Just a brief example, and it's outlined in a, in a report that's attached to this agenda item, the last substation built in the City of Indio was in 2003. We were about 50,000 population in 2003, we're approaching 100,000 now. So, this 40,000 to 50,000 new residents are taxing the system, and we're already here, I'm a fairly new resident myself, but we're already here taxing a system that is in need of upgrades and expansion, and this surcharge is outlined in the staff report of .005 cents per kilowatt would be collected by IED, then remitted back to the authority for the purposes of financing, we'd seek financing, paying off the bonds that would be created through the financing, and most importantly, providing this infrastructure that is needed. Again, Mr. Forbath's here from Straddling Law, if you have some specific questions regarding that, but also, we recommend approval. The resolution would authorize that surcharge and put in motion the arrangement with IED, which we call a services servicing agreement. That servicing agreement would allow them to collect that surcharge on our behalf, we're all paying the utility bill anyway, and then remit it back to us for the purposes of this infrastructure.
Can you add a little bit about the importance of the redundancy in the system?
Yeah, it's a great question, because if there's, the water is probably a good example, if we're looping water in a system and there's a problem in one area of the community where the water is out, we've got to find another way to get water to that area, right? But you've got to have capacity, and the electrical system would be the exact same thing. If all of the substations are at capacity and one goes down, you've got to have the ability to reroute the circuits and provide the electricity to that area, there's no capacity for that. We know that they're at their limit, we've been, we've been hearing that time and time again, while there's a little bit of reserve for some of the more immediate emergencies, that redundancy just doesn't exist, because the capacity doesn't exist. Once this capacity is in place, if you approve, then there would be this balancing of the system and allow for all of us to be able to benefit from that expanded infrastructure. Frankly, it just doesn't exist now, it's far more serious than any resident realizes, and that I realized prior to kind of diving into the problem. Again, we're benefiting from the low rates, but that's the circumstance we're in now, is a lack of redundancy, a lack of that reliability, safety that's needed for something so critical as electricity.
And we might as well, sorry.
No, no, go right ahead.
No, I just wanted to let the city manager go ahead and disclose that surcharge amount, which is one half of a penny per kilowatt. I mean, we might as well be public about that if we're talking about the surcharge.
Yes, .005, five cents per kilowatt.
Half a penny per kilowatt.
Yes, is that right? Yes.
.00?
Two zeros.
Two zeros, 0005, right?
Yes.
Half, that is a half a cent.
So, but Brian, that's not gonna alleviate any of the developers or anybody else from paying their portion of it going in, this is just to expand our expansion of the city itself, because, you know, Uno BBQ, a bunch of the others, the possible new Pulte homes, the possible other housing there, the mall aren't gonna be able to develop unless we have the capacity and the opportunities to have power to a lot of the new organizations.
Thank you for that question, thank you, because I missed that. Another item, we'll come back to you, as a board here in the IEFA, in partnership with the City of Indio, is to collect a development impact fee for electricity specific to that. The key here is the chicken and the egg, you know, who's gonna build it first and who's gonna partially reimburse? This scenario would allow the infrastructure to be in place, and people would buy into that capacity as they come forward. It would have been great if this happened 20 years ago, it just didn't, so we gotta take from now in the future and do it better.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but new developments now, the substation's not there, they're forced to pay for the full cost, and then they're never reimbursed, right?
That is, that is the dilemma.
Regardless of devising.
Which is turning away a lot of business.
And we know that IED is not gonna do the capacity that we need to be able to start it, so basically, we are investing in ourselves to make sure we have the power we need, and, you know, as Indio, we're gonna lead, as usual, so.
Well, I think the next piece of that is, everything that everybody's mentioning here goes back to an environment of jobs, of supporting our community, this is transformational, and everything you talked about, the mall, everything throughout this entire community goes back to serving our community, providing them the kinds of jobs and careers, keeping them here, they're living here, they're working here, and we have a thriving community that supports its consumers, its locals, and I think that's hugely important. It's what is going to define Indio's future for many generations, I mean, this is huge.
Hypothetically speaking, what would happen if IED did raise their rates enough to start paying for some of those substations?
Yeah, have you served on the IED energy committee?
In the future, I'm saying in the future.
No, no, but we've proposed a five cents increase every year for 20 years, and they refused.
But in the future, we have a different board, hypothetically speaking.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, and there've been attempts since I arrived, the mayor pro tem refers to previous attempts, they absolutely said no. There was just no way. To the extent that as this JPA was formed, they would prefer you to be the board, sometimes a JPA, as you recall, has members from each entity, they did not want to be a part of what we're asking you to do tonight, and so I don't think that is, that's possible. With some more board change, perhaps in the future, we could see that, because, mayor, I think your point's critical with regard to the investor-owned utilities, the others out there. The California Public Utilities Commission approves these rate increases on a frequent basis for the exact same infrastructure we're talking about here. So, this has been publicly vetted, conducted by state agencies to do exactly what we're asking you to do, and we wish IED was willing, but this is the mechanism that they preferred, after a lot of negotiations that Mr. Forbath was a part of, to bring us to where we're at now. I wish there was a different choice, but this is the one, but maybe, Brian, you have some to add?
Just one other response to the mayor's question about that is, you know, this surcharge at the current amount that we're proposing isn't gonna solve all of the substation issues. I think the, is, as outlined in the report that's before you, as part of the record here, there's IED identified at least nine substations that are needed, the total cost of substations is north of $115 million, this is gonna probably fund four-ish substations, and maybe provide some seed money for some other ones, so it's just gonna be a part of that, so if IED does come forward and decides they are gonna raise rates and start funding this, that's great, because there's other needs and other things that can be satisfied with.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one question, but I want you to go back, you said that pretty fast, we need nine substations, correct?
That's what was.
Yeah, in fact, just because it may be a visual, if Matt can pull up the PowerPoint, I'll just show those, because I know the mayor, or the council member's seen those, but maybe the public, so it's maybe the third slide, Matt, if you can just forward that to me, because I think this is such a critical point, if you get it to full screen, sorry, this is a part of a larger PowerPoint, but the third slide, it has a bunch of circles on it, Matt?
I think it's the fourth.
Yeah, we have it.
Fourth slide.
It's in our staff report.
Yeah, I believe.
It's forwarded a little bit more.
Yeah, I think it's the next one.
There it is.
One more, I think, one.
Nope, going back.
It's page 31 of 50 on our PowerPoint, on ours.
Yeah.
There we go.
So, those green dots, back to council member Furman's question, those green dots, this is a map and plan provided by IED that outlines at least nine substations that are needed for Indio, so yes, I wish this were a full solution, but it's not, it's just a partial one. The red are the existing substations, and a question the mayor pro tem asked me during the week, I think it's important here too, the substations that were selected, the circles are a sphere of influence, where the substations have the most immediate impact. Again, they balance the system and have a broader impact, but the question that was asked of me is making sure that if the surcharge is going to provide infrastructure for Indio residents, and so the infrastructure that's been selected, the substations that were being identified are clearly within the city limits of Indio, so we wouldn't be subsidizing, if you will, outside the city limits.
Well, and that's what makes this different, because if IED was to collect it, they would put it wherever they want, and which is usually not in the city of Indio.
Good point.
I have one more legal question. If, so we have the JPA with Indio, does that give us the ability to go out and find additional funding out there? For instance, if we were to implement some sort of clean energy in our, in our city, would that give us the ability to go out and find funding that would be dedicated to Indio?
Potentially, I mean, the Indio Electric Financing Authority will now, as soon as, assuming the surcharge gets approved this evening, and we move forward, and we issue bonds, and we start building infrastructure, the, you as the board, are you gonna own an electric system, right? You're gonna own an electric system, you're gonna contract with IED to operate it and maintain it. There are, as an owner of, owner of an electric system, there are various other things you can decide to do with that electric system, you can decide to expand it, et cetera. I mean, there are restrictions in the joint powers agreement that you have, that you're not going to provide retail distribution to your customers, but you're going to sort of enhance the reliability and resiliency of the system, and if there are other funding opportunities that are. And if there are other funding opportunities that are open to the IFA and the city, those are things that your new Joint Powers Authority could pursue.
Yeah, so, I want to bring this up, and I appreciate you, you know, mentioning that, but we're all bringing up reasoning why we have this, and Councilmember Miller brought it up already, the state of California is mandating that we have a certain amount of affordable housing. Well, as it stands right now, we can't power affordable housing. And so, it's, you know, this is an absolute need and urgency with this that we're doing. So, I mean, this is a milestone here in our city, and, you know, I don't know if anybody else has a discussion, but I'll make a motion if...
I just have one request, and when we start doing the outreach for the surcharge coming in, to also add the programs for low-income residents from IED that can give those and add it into the same outreach process.
Great idea. The resolution as stated now would have the surcharge come into place in November 1st, so we have some time for that type of public information. Though residents now can go onto the IED website, many of our residents would be eligible for assistance now, and they're not taking advantage of it. The last I heard, there was north of $10 million available for assistance that can only be used for assistance. So, we need to tap into that now.
Yeah, we need to promote it more, and when we do promote the IED programs, we also need to promote the senior exemption for the utility users tax. That's, nobody knows about that. And I just got my electric bill yesterday. I have more of a credit from the exemption than I do for the production or generation of solar on my house.
Wow.
So, that's how significant it is for senior citizens like me.
Great point, yeah. This, there are services out there available to assist people with these existing bills, notwithstanding the surcharge. One point that was made that I think is important, and Mr. Forbath discussed, the assets, if you approve and we finance, the assets would be owned by the Indio Electric Finance Authority. So, these would not be owned by IED, they would be operated by IED.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I have one other question. City manager, what's the timeline for us to get this, the implement portion of this? How long does it take for ordering parts and getting these things done? Because I know as time goes on, everything goes up higher, so...
It has been a challenge, and we're coordinating with IED. We had a very productive meeting last Friday discussing those next steps. Mr. Trejo here on our team staff, General Manager IWA, has broad experience in managing large projects like this. It's a great question, but we want to be concurrent. So, while we're waiting for the time where the financing would be in place, we will commence or accelerate the engineering. We have some very broad conceptual engineering. Now, we have to get down to the nuts and bolts of it. Unfortunately, there's long lead time on the transformers and switchgear. Some of this infrastructure may not be in place for another 18 to 24 months, but we got to start now so that we get there.
Thank you for the work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll recommend the motion adopt the IFA Resolution Number 2023-01.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Holmes. Let's go ahead and vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to public hearings. We have 11.1, approving engineers' annual levy report, and levying the annual assessments for City of Indio landscape and lighting districts. Mr. Tim Wassel.
Yes, sir. So, good afternoon. So, this is a public hearing, and do we open the public hearing, or do I give the report first?
Report first.
Okay, very well.
I think, yeah.
Okay. So, this is an annual report that we bring to the city council. There are 52 separate landscape and lighting districts in the city of Indio. Those districts were created consistent with the Lighting Landscape Act of 1972. That act requires an annual review by the city council at a public hearing, and the city council action would confirm and finalize the engineer's report and authorize the levy and collection of assessments with the district for this current fiscal year of 2324. And the timeline for this is today, the public hearing will be held, and if the resolution is adopted by the city council, then the assessment will be filed with the county assessor on August the 10th. And with that, it is our recommendation that the city council adopt two resolutions. The first one is Resolution 10374, which approves the annual, the engineer's annual levy report for the landscaping and lighting districts numbers 01 through 22, and 24 through 29, and 31 through 54 for fiscal year 2324. And the second resolution, Resolution Number 10375, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the 52 lighting and landscaping districts for fiscal year 2324. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wassel?
No.
Nope. Right, we'll entertain a motion. It's a public hearing. Oh, sorry. We'll open up the public hearing. Do you have any public comments?
None, Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion adopt one Resolution Number 10374, approving engineers' annual levy report for the landscaping and lighting district numbers 01-22, 24-29, and 31-54 for fiscal year 202324. And number two, Resolution Number 10375, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the 52 landscape and lighting districts for fiscal year 2023 and 24.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Miller. Let's go ahead and vote. She's out right now. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. We'll move on to 11.2, adopting Resolution Number 10378. Mr. Rob Rockwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item tonight is an annual reoccurring item. Following the public hearing, staff is recommending adoption of four resolutions that allow the levy of special taxes to continue, and also allow the county auditor to collect the levy on behalf of the city of Indio. The first reso says the levy for the public safety assessment, CFD 2004-1, 2004-2, those are more specifically the law enforcement, fire, and paramedic service CFDs. In accordance with the resolution of formation, staff is recommending a 2% increase in that levy that will increase the annual levy $10.28, bringing it up to $524.45. Upon approval, those levies will generate about $4.8 million that will offset the cost of public safety services in the city of Indio, which exceeds almost, well, about $50 million for fire and public safety combined. The other three resolutions conform and continue the special levy to cover debt service on infrastructure, specifically for CFDs in Terolago, Talavera, and Sonora Wells, and that debt is to be paid over a 30-year period, and starting off in 2005, and most of that debt won't be paid off until mid, or 2035, 2036. So, that concludes staff presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do you have any public comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, adopt Resolution Number 10378, authorizing the levy of a special tax for City of Indio Community Facilities District Number 2004-1, law enforcement, fire, and paramedic services, and annexation areas thereto. The City of Indio Community Facilities District Number 2004-2, law enforcement, fire, and paramedic services. Resolution Number 10379, Community Facilities District Number 2004-3, Terolago Area 1, Number 1. Resolution Number 10380, Community Facilities District Number 2005-1, Talavera Area Number 1 and 2, and Resolution Number 10381, Community Facilities District Number 2006-006-1, Sonora Wells for the fiscal year 202324.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion from Councilmember Holmes and a second from Councilmember Miller. Let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Rockwell, could I commandeer that phrase, "reso"? I like that.
I actually made a note not to say that in my presentation. Slipped.
That's funny. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. 11.3 and 11.4, I believe we are moving to the next meeting?
Quick.
Do we need a motion for that, sir? No?
Yes, if the council wanted to have a motion to continue items 11.3 and 11.4 to the next regular meeting of the city council, that'd be appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Furman. Let's go ahead and vote.
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Getting excited. This is exciting.
And we'll move on to 11.5, request for city council certificate of public convenience or necessity for a Type 40 on-sale liquor license for Avenida Music.
The mayor pretty much did my presentation.
Excuse me. Here we go again. All righty, it's been a pleasure. Good night.
So, as I indicated, the mayor kind of did my presentation, but I will keep it brief, as this is the last item on the agenda. As the council is well aware, the renaissance of downtown Indio is well underway, and we have many exciting things happening over the next several months, including the opening of a number of new businesses. And one of the first is Avenida Music's Little Street Music Hall at 82707 Miles Avenue. And they are going to have a performance space, they are going to have a bar area and a coffee bar. And as part of this, they inquired with the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, and it was determined that they needed to have council approval to operate the bar component of their operation. And that's what's referenced as the Type 40 on-sale liquor license. So, in this instance, the reason that this is items before you is because there's an undue concentration of liquor licenses in the census tract, and that's typically what happens when the ABC or Alcohol Beverage Control Commission reviews the number of liquor licenses and makes a determination of how many are acceptable before there's an undue concentration. In this instance, six is the threshold. Anything above that is undue concentration. So, their laws require that you, as the legislative body, make a determination that there's a public convenience or necessity to issue an additional liquor license. So, in this instance, the request before the council this evening is to issue that certificate of public convenience or necessity for the Type 40 on-sale liquor license for Avenida Music's Little Street Music Hall. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have before you open the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions before we open up?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any public comments?
None, Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Question?
Mr. Snyder, if this is approved, when will they open?
So, that was an easy one, actually. So, Avenida Music's Little Street Music Hall is scheduled to have a grand opening on July 28th, which is about a week from this coming Saturday. So, it's a very exciting time, and the first of what we will see, hopefully, a number of openings in our downtown over the next few months. And so, they are very much looking forward to the opportunity to bring their performance opportunities to the downtown area, and to the residents of the city of Indio, and to our visitors.
Appreciate it. I promise I wouldn't talk that much today, so go ahead and...
Mr. Snyder, this is going to be the first of many, though. I have the distinct feeling, we have the other restaurants coming, so everyone is going to have to come back.
The council member is correct with that undue concentration, and we'll be back before you with the other requests as those businesses file their application materials with ABC.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead and entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion, approve certificate of public convenience or necessity, City Case Number 23-05-49, authorize grant of a Type 40 on-sale liquor license issued by the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC, for Avenida Music LLC Little Street Music Hall at 82707 Miles Avenue, Indio, California 92201. Assessor Parcel Number 611-172-001.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Miller. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. We'll move on to our public comments for items not on the agenda. We have the first one from Rodrigo Garcia Sandoval.
We get the council member back?
He brought backup with him.
No, I'm talking...
No, she's gone.
Oh, does he take off? No, I don't think so.
No, she said she wasn't going to.
Oh, okay.
No, she, her stuff's still here.
Sorry. Oh, sorry about that.
Hi, everyone. I have part of my family here, and I almost lost all I have in my, I have to say, you know, too much time to wait. But I'm here because I have concerns about the traffic accidents on my neighborhood. I live in Indio, 82630 Avenue 44, and Deglenor in the corner, very familiar. Maybe you drive every day or more than once a day. And we bought the house since 10, 11 years ago, and we never stopped watching accidents, you know. Thank you for the change you made on the avenue, because in the past was, I think, four roads. Now, there's two back and forth. And, but that's, this is enough, you know, to help us to stop the accidents. And I have videos. I try to get letters from my neighbors, and most of them, they said, hey, you know, we support what you're trying to get. And I'm trying to get stops, stop signs. There's two buildings, the apartments, I don't know what they call, but there's two different buildings. So, there's one in front across my house, and the other is across the sole street. So, it's very important. Then, where I live is in Deglenor, and that street cross from 44 through the canal, almost the whole neighborhood. So, the people say they drive most the Deglenor than the other routes, you know, and that's why my concern is they put on a flashlight, I don't know what they call, a flashing light to walk the, I mean, to cross the street. But the people say, on daylight, the drivers don't see the people crossing the street. The other day, I saw, I almost saw an accident, so the car didn't stop, and the couple was crossing the street and almost killed him, you know, just for a little bit, and, well, thanks God, nothing happened. Yeah, but that's part of my concerns, and I'm very, I'm sorry, I passed the three minutes.
No, you're good.
I'm very concerned, I mean, I'm very surprised, because I hear a lot of projects, I mean, future projects, and a lot of money, you know, using for those projects. And I, I'm trying to get help from you, because I want to see my kids grow up. I have, I'm father of four, so I want to let you know.
Thank you.
What's my concerns.
Thank you. Brian, can we give somebody's card to follow up?
I can provide a card to you, and we'll be able to follow up on the specifics. It's probably a combination of enforcement, as well as there might be some engineering issues there at that location.
Okay. We'll follow up.
Yeah, the last thing is, and also the lights on 44 and Jackson, they, we don't have a safe left turn, so we need to wait for many, two times, the lights change, and maybe we can make it. And sometimes I go to the, to the school to make a left, you know, the left turn and go out... know, the left turn and go around. But it's the same thing. There's no, there's no safe, safe left.
We are, we are fortunate to have received a grant for a lot of the rework there on 44. So we've got a great opportunity to address every one of these. There are warrants that are required to be met. My guess is with the school, those requirements would be met. But in the meantime, I think it may be as much of an enforcement issue until some of that infrastructure is in place. So Chief Tolle will connect with you and let's get contact back and forth so we can get some more detail and, and go out and check it, check it out.
Thank you. And we are still waiting for the park.
We're going, we're going.
Across the street.
It's coming.
My kids, they, where's the park? It's right there. I don't see, I don't see it.
It's coming, it's coming. Don't worry. We got the money. We got the money. But thank you. We appreciate you coming and let us know so that we can deal with that for, for the community.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tony Daslan.
Good evening, Mayor Ortiz and council members. My name is Tony Daslan. My husband Rodney and I are owners of a building in downtown on Fargo Street. We have literally bought into the downtown specific plan. We understand that this revival plan takes time. And we are understanding that this is a process. But through this process, we want to create positive relationships with the city and our neighbors so that we can have a successful business here. We have a submitted construction plan, so we're very excited about finalizing our building, employing more residents, and bringing in more people traffic into the city. But with this, this said, we are having some difficulty securing our building through this process. And I'd like to share a little bit of that with you. We are having some difficulty with the transients who are breaking in daily and nightly into our buildings. They are vandalizing our buildings on the inside, stealing our copper, which is making it difficult to have water, AC, to name a few. Those are the very, the more PC things that I can mention. We're having difficulty and challenges with infrastructure for hard-wire, high-speed internet. So it doesn't allow us to have a secure security system or cameras, either through Spectrum or Frontier. They will not service our building. So we would like some cooperation with that. And we're also requesting some more proactive enforcement from the police to ensure that our building, when it is vandalized and there are people inside, that we get a little bit more enforcement to, one, maybe deter them, and two, to have some degree of enforcement once they have broken in. So these are a few things that are happening. We're excited. We are looking into purchasing more buildings in the, in the downtown area. But certainly, we need some support with some infrastructure issues that are a big deal. And with support with securing our, our property and our investment in the city. With that, thank you very much. And any cooperation, we're open to.
Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, can we give them a contact as well?
Chief Tolle's outside.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any other public comments?
None, Mayor.
This gentleman in the corner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members and staff. My name's Stephen Viatic, owner of Reefer Madness. And I'm an appellant for the Indio cannabis permit. As previously discussed before the council, the appeals hearing officer made an incorrect decision on June 14th, 2023, stating falsely that I did not submit a timely appeal. Timeliness was the only topic discussed in the hearing officer's decision. Other appellants received similar letters with the same incorrect decision. The city agreed this was a very serious error and asked for our consent to have a hearing, to have the hearing officer take another look. In good faith, I agreed to a stipulation allowing for the same hearing officer to consider the facts, which honestly, we had expected to happen already with the first decision. Then on June 30th, I received another flimsy decision from the hearing officer. The logic in the decision is flimsy and would not hold up to court scrutiny. The decision calls many of my points irrelevant or outside the scope of the hearing officer, and it also calls one of my points merely arguing semantics. We recognize the limitations of the appeal process and recognize that the appeal officer is limited in his decisions and scope. The results is inherently biased, appeal process in favor of the city's Phase 3 determination. Another major concern is the hearing officer's firm's website specifically boasts winning cannabis cases for cities. I am requesting that the city council please study this problematic situation and please invite the appellants and myself to the Phase 4 city council interviews for a cannabis permit. I am in the process of reviewing thoroughly and analyzing each point in the hearing officer's final determination. And I will share more information soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Our next council meeting is going to be August 16th. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.